Thank you, councillors. I'm just about to formally start the meeting. Good evening to councillors and officers and members of the public in attendance to our and our viewers online live streaming, as we will be live streaming tonight's council meeting, and I declare this meeting open at four minutes past six. My name is councillor Julie Williams, I'm the mayor of Darabin City Council, and I'm also the chairperson of tonight's council meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's council meeting, as this meeting has also been scheduled as hybrid meeting, and also want to welcome councillor Messina who is online, and any other members of the public who is viewing online, and those who are attending in the gallery, thank you. This meeting is being livestreamed, and the recording will be made available on the council website as soon as practical. I'd like to start by acknowledging the Warren Jerry, the Warren people, as the traditional owners of the land, and pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging, and also like to recognise their continuing connection to the land, water and culture. Before we commence, I also like to introduce you to our councillors that are with us this evening and senior staff. I have councillor Newton, our deputy mayor, councillor Emily Demetriades, councillor Gaetano Greco, councillor Tom Hannon, councillor Tim Lawrence, councillor Trent McCarthy. I have councillor Lena Messina that's online virtual, and councillor Susan Rennie. In our offices, we have Peter Smith, our CEO, who's on my side, and I also have Bobby Bright on my other side as the head of governance and risk. I have Tanya as our general manager of governance and engagement, Rachel is our general manager in operational capital, Kylie Bennetts as also our other general manager in regards to community, and Vanessa Petrie from city sustainability and strategy. I do not have any apologies this evening. We'll go on to conflicts of interest. Do we have any councillors or staff that do have a conflicts of interest that they would like to declare before we begin?
No.
Mayor Williams, I think I have a conflict of interest in relation to item 9.7, the leasing, proposed leasing arrangements for kindergartens, and the conflict is in regards to my partner being a casual, occasional employee for the Clifton Street childcare centre. And Mayor Williams, what I'll be asking is that, given that we're considering 18 childcare centres, I'll be asking that if we can separate the Clifton Street childcare centre and at one stage discuss and debate the other 17, so that I could be in the room for the 17, and then leave the room for the discussion around the Clifton Street one. So that'll give me an opportunity to democratically participate in today's proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco. I would like to go to the conflicts of interest, yeah?
Thank you, mayor, through you. I have a general conflict of interest in items 9.13, CEO employment matters committee, and confidential item 13.1, CEO performance review, those matters involving my employment as CEO, so I declare a general interest, conflict of interest in those two items. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Williams, I've got a conflict in relation to item 9.9, as a member of the DMC that's been involved in discussions on that matter.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Are there any other councillors or officers? Thank you. In reference to your question councillor Greco, I'll have a think about it, but I do have my concerns in reference to your conflict, considering that the agenda item that we will be in debating this evening is actually about a contract, and that contract is the same for all 18, I guess 18, kindergartens and creches, which concerns me, and pulling one out may change the variance of that particular contract if the vote goes a different way. I'm just...
Mayor Williams, if I may, advice that I've received from the CEO suggests that it could be done, but it's up to the will and the discretion of the council to allow me to participate in the debate where we split the motion, so that I could be part of the debate in relation to 17 of the childcare centres, and then leave the room in relation to the Clifton Street Reservoir Centre. So it is possible, and I'll be asking discretion of councillors and you, mayor, to allow me to participate in the debate.
All right, when we get to the item, then we'll have a further discussion on it, but until then, I will continue tonight's agenda if that's okay. Thank you. Councillors, I'll move on to the next item, which is the confirmation of minutes from our previous meeting, which was held at the 25th of September. Do I have a mover and a seconder in reference to the minutes of the previous meeting? Councillor McCarthy, and I have councillor Rennie, I'll put that to vote. All those in favour? That is being carried unanimously, thank you. Cancer's occupational health and safety council has the occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure that anybody attending tonight's meeting feels safe physically and emotionally, whether it's online or in person. We have question, public question time, we have a few couple of public question time items this evening. We will allow 30 minutes for public question time, but if we do exceed that time, I will allow a procedural motion to extend that 30 minutes. Now, in line with the council's governance rules, no question will be taken from people in the gallery unless you have submitted your question prior 12 o'clock today. If you can, in reference to your question, you have up to three questions that you can ask, and you have a maximum of two minutes. So kindly, please be mindful of question time when you're asking your question. Questions relating to notice of motions, petitions or urgent business items will not be accepted in accordance with the governance rules. For members of the public who have registered to ask their question in person, I will ask your name, I'll call your name out, and if you're in the gallery, feel free to come up and ask your question once you come up to the lectern. Any questions that are like for like will be grouped together, and the first person who'd submitted their question will be asked their question on their behalf, in their name. So the first person I have this evening is Michael. Is Michael here this evening?
Yes, Michael.
Haralambus, is it? Thank you, Michael. If you can just state your name and your suburb, that would be greatly appreciated, then you can ask your question.
...and consistently advocated for reinstatement, and I was encouraged to write to my local MP. Recently, funding was announced for the corridor planning for High Street, the High Street section of Route A6 through Northcote-Thornbury. At the council meeting on 25 September 2023, a resident from Northcote was provided with a very detailed response, and assured that this council is working with the Department of Transport and Planning on these designs to provide local feedback and knowledge. Could you please provide an update on the following? Number one, what specifically has this council done to advocate for reinstatement of Stop 52 since the question was raised last year? Number two, why is the corridor planning cut at the Plenty Road junction when the demographic data shows the need for accessible stops is greater north of Bell Street? And number three, and I guess this question is directed at the councillors more specifically, how are residents north of Bell Street meant to see this as anything other than a further example of this council preferring the more affluent and better serviced residents of Northcote and Thornbury to the detriment of those in Preston and Reservoir? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Michael, appreciate your questions. We'll ask our officer who will respond to those questions.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Thank you, Michael, for your questions, and I also appreciate the time you took with one of my officers today. The council has advocated for the reinstatement of Stop 52 for a number of years now. Late last year, council worked closely with the Department of Transport and Planning to consider Darabin's tram needs and advocacy priorities, and this included workshops and a site visit to the site of the Stop 52. Last year, the department advised council that level access tram stops are their developmental priority, and I really do understand this is not the outcome that you were hoping for. It's also not the outcome we preferred for this location either. Council will be writing to the new minister for public and active transport, the honourable Gabrielle Williams, to ask that the government prioritise Stop 52. Regarding your second question, the department's corridor planning project stops at the Plenty Junction because that's based on the department's selection criteria. And regarding your last question, improving accessible public transport across all of Darabin is a priority for council.
Was anything done prior to raising the second question in relation to writing to the relevant ministers?
I personally can answer that because I have been actively advocating to ensure that that stop gets reinstated. However, we can take this offline at a later day, and our officers can also respond to you in writing, if that's okay, Michael?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, as there's been some community interest in reference to 9.7 in leasing of kindergartens and childcare centres, and we have received a number of questions on this topic. And in accordance to our governance rules of 15.2, these questions will be grouped as liked questions with a single response provided by our officers because they're very similar. So over to our officers to read out that question. Thank you.
Mayor, I believe Owen, is Owen in the audience this evening? Yep.
Warren, just state your name and your suburb before we start.
Owen McCrane, Preston.
Thank you.
So this is in obviously relation to 9.7, the property matters for the leasing of kindergartens and childcare centres. So first question and a bit of a preamble, community kindergarten childcare services are an asset to the community that should be cherished by council. Why are the council negatively impacting community services by significantly decreasing the leasing duration from our previous 10-year or five-by-two-year leases, and increasing costs for services through additional outgoing utilities and maintenance costs? Community and childcare services already struggle to keep the finances afloat, even with significant time donations by the volunteer committees of management, and parent financial donations as well. Second, does the council still actively believe in supporting community kindergarten services? And three, with such negative changes being made towards community kindergarten services and childcare services, how is the council going to repair these relationships that have been hurt in the last week and ensure the strength of the services in the future?
Thank you, and when our officers will answer those questions, thank you.
Thank you through you, mayor. Thanks for the question, Owen. As the mayor said before, we've had a number of similar questions, so certainly my records show 80 people had submitted questions on similar topics by midday. So I'm going to make a short sort of statement that covers all of those, including the questions we've heard from Owen. So council's got a longstanding and ongoing commitment to supporting community managed kindergarten and childcare services. This was restated recently in the early years infrastructure planning framework, which runs from 2021 to 2041, and was adopted middle of last year, so middle of 2022. Council's budgeted 8.25 million over the next four years in the budget which it adopted in June this year, towards the expansion of the kindergarten programme. And item 9.6 on tonight's agenda is about the expansion of that programme. The report, item 9.7, which is the one the questions relate to, is about 18 early years facilities leases. What council's being asked to make a decision about tonight is whether to proceed to community consultation about proposed new leases. The report proposes that new leases be provided for 18 early years services to enable them to continue providing services beyond the current lease term which expires at the end of December this year. The proposal is that these leases would be on the basis of a peppercorn rent, which includes a rental subsidy of very close to 100%. Consultation is needed under the Local Government Act for most of the sites, because most of the sites have an annual rental value of over $100,000 each. Council will consider whether to proceed to consultation in its meeting tonight, and if it does so, a consultation period will occur. After hearing community views, council will make a decision about the leases. The reason that a two-year term has been proposed is to enable these leases to align with the implementation of a leasing and licensing policy. Council's been developing that separately, and it's expecting to consult on a draft and then finalise it during the next 12 months. The aim of developing a policy is to have a transparent and consistent approach across all the different types of community services that council supports with provision of property. There aren't any other motives behind trying to align those two pieces of work. That's the intent of proposing a two-year term. Council supports community managed providers in a range of other ways, including through running professional development programmes and networks for staff and volunteers, providing the early years resource van service, providing the central registration service for both kindergarten and childcare, and I think very much looking forward to having a constructive and longstanding relationship with the providers. Thank you.
Thank you, you may sit down. The next question I have is from Rena. Is Rena in the gallery? If not, then I'll have one of our officers to actually ask Rena's question on her behalf, if that's okay. Thank you, over to you, Rena.
Thanks, mayor, and through you, Rena has three questions in relation to Edwards Lake Park. The first is, when will council redevelop the main entrance at Edwards and Griffiths Street, including reinstating the iron wrought, the original wrought iron Edwards Lake sign? Two, when will council develop and improve the lake's supporting infrastructure, including construction of boardwalk along sections of the lake for improved safety and access using environmentally friendly solutions? And the third question, why hasn't council considered other effective water quality solutions, including aeration systems? These systems will not only help improve the water quality of the lake, but will also create a unique water feature and attraction for park visitors.
Thank you, Rena. I believe one of our officers, Rachel, will be answering that, is that correct? Thank you, Rachel.
Thanks, mayor. And thank you for the question, Rena. Look, in regards to questions one and two, seeking an overhaul of the entrance and then also suggesting we construct a boardwalk. At this stage, council doesn't have particular plans for either of those works. We're working through quite a number of other works' priorities across the city, and at this point in time, those other works have been assessed as higher priorities. What we do every year is reassess the priority of works requests across the city, so we'll do that, I'll take these two requests, and ask that our capital works programme team take a look at those along with everything else and do a fresh assessment ahead of the budget next year, and there's an opportunity to make a submission on council's budget, usually in around April each year. In regards to question three, we are aiming to improve the water quality of Edwards Park Lake. We have established the Edwards Lake Task Force, which is currently helping council address options, sorry, assess options, including aeration and filtration systems. I don't yet have the outcomes of this work, but I'm very much looking forward to finding out what's recommended.
Thank you, Rachel. The next person I have that possibly may not be in attendance is Nino. Is Nino in the gallery? Thank you, over to our officers to ask the question on behalf of Nino, thank you.
Thanks, mayor, and through you, Nino has three questions. The first is regarding Edwards Lake Boat House. As I understand it, the removal of the restrictive covenant is expected to be completed in 12 months. Will council now start to commence and implement plans to upgrade the facility? The second question regarding former reservoir library, why is there no set and clear timetable, master plan process or implementation plan in place to determine the future direction of the former library and surrounding car park site? When can we expect council to take action and redevelop this site? And the third is regarding former reservoir police precinct. I understand council is in the process of seeking EOI and responses from external community-based stakeholders. Can council accelerate this process and immediately commence retrofitting the premises?
Thank you, Rena. Over to our officer to answer that, thank you, Rachel.
Thanks, mayor. So in regards to the question about Edwards Lake Boat House, so council does have plans for $350,000 worth of works at the boat house in the 2526 year. This is included in council's four-year capital budget, which was adopted in June. The proposed timing is intended to be after council knows if it's been able to remove the restrictive covenant. We're optimistic that we will be able to get it removed, but in the event that doesn't occur, it isn't clear that bringing the boat house to life as a venue would be feasible. And given the very significant community funds involved and the many other community needs for funding, we're, council is being cautious about investing the funds until it is sure that they can create value at that site. In regards to the timing of development at the former reservoir library site, this site is a current year priority for strategic assessment, and in due course, that work will work towards a master plan. The work started, it's at the stage where the timeline and sequence of work is being developed, and a report to confirm scope is expected to come to council in early 2024. Work to plan for and redevelop a large site like this is one that can take in the order of five years, it's not a quick process. Before we get to construction, there are a range of things like development feasibility, technical feasibility, strategic use assessment, consultation, master planning, market testing or design and approvals. And last one, the former reservoir police precinct, so what I can say is that we're currently reviewing registrations of interest. We're expecting to have an outcome of that process pretty soon, and any works for the site relate to then the lease agreement between the parties, so we are going to wait until that's in place before we do works on that building.
Thank you, Rachel. The next person that we have on my list is Shaun Nettleton. Shaun in the gallery this evening? If not, then I'll ask Rena to read out Shaun's questions on his behalf, thank you.
Thanks, mayor, and through you, Mr Nettleton has one question. How many months does it normally take for initial contact to be made about a complaint?
Tanya?
Thanks, mayor. Thanks for your question, Shaun. Complaints are assessed in accordance with the complaint handling policy and are generally acknowledged within two business days. Council endeavours to resolve all complaints within two weeks.
Thank you, Tanya. We'll move on to the next question, I believe we have Serena. Is Serena available in the gallery? Thank you, Serena, if you can kindly step up to the lectern and just state your name and your suburb, and then ask your question.
Serena O'Mearly, Reservoir, thanks. And whoever's taking the minutes, I wonder if you wouldn't mind, I've made a couple of typos in my questions, one's weeded instead of weed, and member instead of members. So question number one, I've repeatedly raised with Darabin council my concerns about the poor upkeep of Clements Reserve. Two key rewilded beds, one at the entrance of McMahon Road, and one in the middle of the park, have been poisoned across their entire area, leaving nothing but yellow straw and a few established plants. Gone are the paper daisy, billy buttons and other small plants. It looks appalling. Poisoning has taken place in a wide margin on the footpath as well. At the Clements Grove End entrance, the rewilded area is overgrown with grasses that will need a team of people to hand weed them to save the plants beneath, such as the inland pig face which is barely visible. This neglect sends a very bad message to our migrant slash working class neighbourhood, namely that it's too much trouble to do rewilding. After making so many requests for council to care for Clements Reserve, I'm left to ask why this particular park is being so incompetently managed. Do you want to answer that one?
Yep, I'll go over to our officers if they wanted to answer that. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, mayor, thanks Serena. So we do know about the maintenance issues at the site, and so, and sort of broadly agree with you about the challenges at that site. I think what we're working through at the moment is the best way, the best pathway to get the sort of management and establishment of that site working well for the long run. What we're intending to do is strip back some of the current rewilding sites at Clements to ensure we can get on top of the maintenance prior to replanting works. Those works will likely include brush cutting, spraying and additional mulching. We'll look to consider replacement species, starting with shrubs and larger grasses and ground covers to get them established first in the next part of this planting season, and so middle of next year, and then we'd aim to build the more delicate species in after that.
Thank you, your next question?
Thank you. I just want to say I'm really concerned about the wholesale use of poisons across the municipality, and I do hope people will think about this in the future. It's really obvious up where I live. Second question, on 8th of June 2023, Darabin council issued a permit, D/7182022, to La Trobe University for the removal of native vegetation at the corner of Plenty Road and Kingsbury Drive to make way for photovoltaic cells. Hundreds of members of the Victorian Field Naturalists Club Facebook page have expressed anger and dismay, and local residents are devastated about the destruction. As one local expert said, this was habitat and greenery for birds and people during a looming climate and biodiversity crisis. It was a regular feeding habitat for nationally threatened gang-gang cockatoos. How did Darabin council judge this planning permit to be consistent with its breathing space policy and other related biodiversity policies?
Thank you, Serena, I'll have Vanessa who will answer those questions, thank you.
Thank you for your question. The planning permit application was triggered under clause 52.17 of the Darabin planning scheme, native vegetation. Council statutory planning team assessed the application in accordance with this clause. The removal of the trees did not require a planning permit, and the assessment was limited to the removal of a section of native patch vegetation that was required for installing the 9,270 solar panels. Council's assessment and decision considered the advice provided from internal council departments, and the application was also referred to the Department of Energy, Environment and Climate Action, the Department of Transport and Planning
the Department of Transport and Planning and the Darabin Creek Management Committee. None of those bodies objected to the proposal. Council's breathing space provides the overarching framework and strategic direction for public open space in the city of Darabin, rather than being a guidance document for the development of land in private ownership.
Thank you, Vanessa. Serena?
Last question. At the 24th July 2023 Darabin Council meeting, Darabin Council confirmed in response to a question from me that it had spent $10691 on contractors due to backfilling staff who were taking industrial action, when it could be finalising an enterprise agreement with fair and a reasonable pay rise that addresses cost of living pressures. How much additional money has Darabin Council spent on external contractors since 24 July 2020? Sorry, that should say 2023 for the minutes. Beg your pardon. To backfill staff who are taking industrial action? Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya?
Thank you.
Or Yvette?
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks, Peter. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Serena, for your question. Very little industrial action has occurred since July 2023. So there has been no further need to engage contractors to backfill. Council is continuing to work with staff and unions on finding a resolution to the enterprise agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya, and thank you, Serena. We'll go over to our next person, John. If you'd like to come to the lectern, just state your name and your suburb and ask your questions.
John Nugent-Epping. Mayor Williams, could you please advise if this year's Christmas decorations will be upgraded, updated or by having new Christmas tree and finally retiring the reindeers and even having Santa walking around the shopping centres? Centre? And will council celebrate the Chinese New Year?
Over to our officers, Kylie. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. This year's Preston Christmas decorations are predominantly the same. But there will be a few updates. The same Christmas tree will feature, but I understand we'll have some fresh new decorations, which will feature a native flora and fauna theme. The sleigh and reindeers will appear near the corner of Gower and High Streets for the last year. It's planned that they're retired for next year. Council's also installing some holiday-themed bin wraps and other small-scale decorations in the activity centres. The four traders' associations will each receive up to $5,000 in matched funding for their decoration spend. And these groups will run their own Christmas holiday-themed street activations. With respect to Lunar New Year, council makes a very modest contribution to Lunar New Year, decorating 421 High Street with a Lunar New Year theme. Most of the celebrations associated with Lunar New Year are undertaken by the Preston Central Trader Association and the Preston Market, who run their own Lunar New Year events. Council does, however, support promotion of these activities.
Thank you, Kylie. John, to your next question, please. Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Yep. Mayor Williams, could you please advise what was the maintenance cost individually for the 2223 financial year for the following parks? Bandura Park, Edwards Lake Park and also National All Nations Park?
Thank you, John. That'll be over to one of our officers, Rachel. Thank you.
Thanks for the question, John. So we don't have a specific budget breakdown for each site within the Parks and Open Space Network. Lots of our crews work across lots of parks. The operating budget in total for our parks operations in the 2223 financial year was a bit over $13.7 million.
And my final question, Mayor, is as an equal opportunity employee, employer, I should say, could the following information please be provided? How many female rubbish truck drivers does this city employ?
Thank you. I'll get Tanya to turn to that question.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, John, for your question. Council doesn't comment on the gender makeup of individual job functions, but I can report that women make up over 60% of Darabin's broader workforce.
Thank you, John. That is all I have for question time. So I'll move on to submissions. We have six people making submissions this evening in relation to 9.7. I will call on those people when it comes relevant to time. We also have one person in reference that has registered to do a submission in relation to the petition that's been tabled this evening. I'll call on them to make their two-minute submission once we have, once that petition has actually been tabled. So the next item is actually petitions. I have councillor Newton, who has a petition this evening. Councillor Newton?
Are you ready for me to table that now, Mayor?
Yep, you want to table that?
Yep.
Did you want to read out what?
Yes. So I move a motion to table a petition for referral to the CEO for consideration and response concerning the Make AG Davis Park Wood Street impressed in a nicer place to be. I move the petition signed by approximately 22 people hard copy and 129 people online. And it complies with governance, council's governance rules. And what they are asking for in this petition is that AG Davis Park is a large park which presents a great opportunity to become a vibrant hub for the local community to come together and enjoy being outside. However, the instalment of a new playground structure in 2023 prompted local residents to question the level of investment and consider planning in not only AG Davis Park, but in green space north of Bell Street more broadly. Earlier this year, 86 local residents filled out an online survey about the recent changes to AG Davis Park. 94% of those surveyed thought the new playground was the same or worse than before. Unfortunately, when presented to the city of Darabin, this data alone was not enough to see council talk to residents about what they want in their local park ought to be like or to commit further investment. Locals are seeking greater investment and consultation in AG Davis Park in order to bring it in line with the investment seen in similar parks located south of Bell Street. We want AG Davis Park to be a hub for the community where people of all ages can find enjoyment and want to visit. This will mean additional investment by council beyond just the recent playground change. Therefore, we're asking you to sign our petition. And specifically, what they are asking for is community consultation to understand what the local community wants, developmentally appropriate equipment for older children, which is not met by recent playground replacement, nature play elements, greater accessibility for all abilities, e.g. broadening the path to the accessible swing, additional shade to make it a safe and enjoyable place to play, additional planting, e.g. community indigenous edible garden, additional shelter, cupboard structures for picnics and a revamp of the toilets, updated and gender neutral. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I now will invite Rebecca Gray, the petition coordinator, to make a two-minute submission that I believe is online this evening. Is Rebecca available there?
Yes, I'm here.
Excellent. Thank you, Rebecca. You have two minutes to speak in reference to the petition. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and councillors. So my name's Bec Gray. I'm a parent of three children and I live near Wood Street Park, as it's known locally. And I'm here tonight with my friend Anna, who's watching online, who's also a local parent to two children. And we're asking you to live up to your strategic objectives of having a vibrant and dynamic spaces and amenities in Darabin with one Darabin with no suburb left behind. When residents saw that the Wood Street playground was being replaced, everyone was extremely excited, especially given the recent playground upgrades that we'd seen at Penders Park, south of Bell Street. But we were really left disappointed. And of that survey that councillor Newton spoke about, over 70% of survey respondents thought the playground was actually worse than before. And in fact, sadly, my children no longer ask me to take them to Wood Street Park on the weekend as it isn't as challenging or as exciting for them. And so we created this petition being tabled tonight by councillor Newton. We believe that there's insufficient investment north of Bell Street. And Wood Street Park is one of the largest open spaces in Preston. But because of the lack of appropriate amenities, it's being underutilised. And families are choosing to travel to playgrounds outside of Preston, including in Banial or Whittlesey. And this really shouldn't be happening. So as councillor Newton said, 149 people responded to our petition and said that they wanted community consultation, developmentally appropriate play equipment, particularly for older kids, nature play, additional shade and planting and additional covers and structures for picnics and a revamp of the toilets. So Wood Street Park, we believe, should be a hub for the community. And it really could be if council decided that investing equally north of Bell Street and ensuring that the residents of Preston had vibrant and dynamic amenities and spaces was a priority. And we would really like you all to make that commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. Councillors, we'll move on to our agenda this evening in consideration that we have a larger agenda and to get through. So we will have time limits. And in reference to our governance rules, I will be permitting questions prior to the commencement of the debate. But if I believe that we've had sufficient amount of time in questions, I'll exercise my right under the governance rules to limit questions and ask for the debate to commence. So consideration of reports this evening. The first report that I have to be considered this evening is the annual report of 202223.
Mayor, I wonder if it might be possible to reorder the agenda in light of the large number of families, I think, with young children who have come? If it would be possible, I'd like to move a motion, procedural motion, that we reorder the agenda to have item 9.7, followed by item 9.6, which also relates to kinder, and then we move back to 9.1.
Okay, councillors, we do have a procedural motion. Is it okay that we put that to vote then? I'll have a second, so councillor McCarthy, councillor Rennie is the mover. Councillor McCarthy is the second to rejig the agenda, the procedural motion to bring forward 9.6 and 9.7 to be heard before we go to 9.1.
Sorry, put that, Mayor. I do need an adjournment of five minutes. If you're going to take 9.7 just to give some governance advice on councillor Greco's request, just so you note that, please.
Okay, councillors, so we're rejigging the agenda this evening. I'll put that to vote. I have councillor Demetriades, councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence and councillor Messina and councillor Williams. All those against. All those abstained. Councillor Greco, where are you voting? You abstaining? Thank you. So councillors, we'll move on. The first agenda item that we have this evening is 9.6, which is kindergarten expansion programme.
Sorry, I think I said 9.7 first, if we could. And I believe the CEO asked if we could take a five-minute adjournment.
Well. Okay. Councillor Greco, I need to ask you the questions in reference to 9.7 that you have declared a conflict as your partner works at one of the kindergartens. You have requested that you would like it to be pulled apart. I need to ask you, will you be staying for the vote of that 9.7? But I think you believe you want it to be pulled apart. Is that correct?
Mayor Williams, I've asked advice from our CEO in regards to that. Earlier on, I was given advice that it can be pulled apart and we can debate them separately, which would be my preference at the discretion of the council and at your discretion. Since then, I've been advised, and I'm a bit confused now, that for some reason it can't be split. So I would just like to get some clarity in relation to that because as a councillor, I would like to participate in the debate as it is my duty and my democratic right to do so. And if there is any possibility that the motion can be split to allow me to participate in the debate, let's explore that. And I seek your indulgence in ensuring that that is fully explored. Thank you.
Okay, I think it might be best that we do adjourn this item. The reason being is it's a bit tricky because we're talking about a contract and all the, it's the same contract for all of them. And I don't believe that it might be the best way forward. However, we will do an adjournment so we can get the proper governance advice in reference to this. I apologize for those that are in the gallery and online. We're going to have a quick short break. It could be five, it could be 10 minutes. I apologize. Thank you to everyone. I will hand it over to councillor Greco on whether he'll be leaving or not for this particular agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Unfortunately, I'll have to declare a conflict of interest in that, in relation to item 9.7. It's a conflict of interest in regards to section 128.3 in respect of a matter and the affected person. And it's in relation to my partner, who is a casual worker at the Clifton Street Children's Centre. So I'll be leaving the chamber unfortunately because I really wanted to participate in this debate because it's an issue that's very close to my heart.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Thank you to councillors. As I said earlier, that we do have a few submitters this evening in reference to this item, and I will allow each person two minutes to speak. I'm not sure of this person here at the moment, which is Tanil Kuri. I believe that she may have pulled out. I'm not sure whether she was going to be online or not.
Mayor, I can see her online, I can see her online, mayor.
Okay, so one of our officers can just double check that. If not, then we'll move on to the next person and while our officers can try and sort the technical side out there, unless they can confirm. Is there any confirmation there at the moment? No, nothing. Okay, we'll move on to the next person, which is Bridget Fitzgerald. Is Bridget Fitzgerald available?
Yes, hello, I'm joining from home.
Hi, Bridget. We do have, will allow two minutes for your submission this evening. Thank you.
Yes, no problem. Hello, mayor and councillors. I just wanted to jump on and say that this news has created a lot of anxiety amongst the group of parents. My daughter attends the Darabben Childcare and Kindergarten in Reservoir. We've just bought a house in Reservoir and we were really keen to get Ada into a community daycare. And I guess, not just because it's close by, but it gives us a bit of a sense of community and continuity of care and knowing that she'd be there and then going into kindergarten. It was just a bit upsetting to hear that the lease would be reduced to two years. It's definitely created a lot of anxiety amongst the staff members. I'm unsure what the plans are, but I just wanted to express that, I guess at a time when Victorian councils, Knox and Glenira, for instance, are shutting down childcare centres, that I guess that my thought was that it has unsettled me a bit and we urge you to reconsider. That's all. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just check? I can see 9.7 on screen, but I was of the understanding we were dealing with 9.6, then 9.7?
No, we are actually doing 9.7 first.
We are, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Bridget. We'll move on to the next person and invite Camilla Rehorsd. Is Camilla there? Thank you, if you can stand up, come to the lectern.
Hi.
You have two minutes for your submission. Thank you, Camilla.
Thank you. So I am the president of Clifton Street Children's Centre and I'm also... Sorry, can you hear me now? Hi. I'm the president of Clifton Street Children's Centre and a mother of two children. So I've come here to say that the proposed recommendation in agenda 9.7 negatively impacts the 18 early years providers in some critical ways. Namely, the reduced tenure severely limits the ability of providers to strategically plan, coordinate investment in infrastructure upgrades, and offer security to staff and families. There are significant financial implications as well resulting from the new leasing occupancy levies. The 18 early years providers are concerned about the objective and scope of the consultation, specifically that it could be foreshadowing an intent of council to transition to a more commercial, privatised system of early years service delivery. This concern has been fuelled by the failure of Darabben council to appropriately communicate the proposed lease changes to the approved providers of each service. Thank you.
Thank you, Camilla. We'll move on to the next person, which is Tina Agrios. Is Tina available? Tina, if you can just step up to the lectern and just... You have two minutes to speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tina and I work for Darabben Childcare and Kindergarten in Reservoir. On the 6th of July of this year, we received from the city of Darabben a letter of intention for a five-year lease agreement. We confirmed that we had every intention to enter into this agreement. On the 14th of August of this year, we received a service agreement of five years, which again we accepted by signing and returning to the city of Darabben. Now we are being advised that this is no longer the case and that from five years it will now be done to two years with no further open to renew. Being informed of this change so late in the year and so close to lease renewal has put a strain on planning for our future. It's created an insecurity for our children, families and educators. We are aware that other city councils have done something similar and that it has resulted in centres being closed. I generally hope as a staff member of 24 years at Darabben that this will not happen to our local community. That's why we also have a very big backing. We've got over 45 people in the next room here supporting us tonight. And we all urge you to please reconsider and give us a five-year lease agreement. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tina. The next person I have is Kim Miller. Is Kim in the gallery? If you can just step up to the lectern. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. I am Kim Miller. I am the president of the Committee of Management of Darabben Childcare and Kindergarten, which has two early years services within Darabben City Council. I am here speaking on behalf of the Volunteer Committee of Management, but also as a parent of two children who has attended the services. The coordinator of property services has endorsed a proposal to undertake a community engagement programme and by implication in that has endorsed a transition from a five-year leasing arrangement to a two-year lease. It's that latter item that is the focus of my submission. And that's not necessarily part of a procedural item around community engagement. I am asking the council to acknowledge the impact of the proposed change to the lease tenure where the reduced security of the tenure negatively impacts the ability of our service to strategically plan beyond 2025. And that impact is quite destabilising for the community and can impact future enrolments at the centre. This impact would be particularly acute for those in the Priority of Access Programme. I also ask that you acknowledge the financial impact that those proposed additional levies will have on service providers, which may mean passing on costs to families. This is contrary to the government initiatives to make childcare more affordable and to Darabben Childcare and Kindergarten's commitment to doing so. I also want to ask you to acknowledge the importance of Darabben Childcare and Kindergarten to delivering Darabben's Early Years Infrastructure Planning Framework 2021 to 2041. Across the two centres, we have 49 staff, most of whom are sitting in the next room, along with... along with parents from our centres. We have 200 families who access our services for long daycare and three- and four-year-old kindergarten, and we're committed to access inclusion and diversity. We are asking you to note the above items, and I implore the councillors who represent our communities, who have the best interests of our families and those communities, to reject the proposal to transition to two-year lease agreements and maintain the existing five-year lease term at existing occupancy rates.
Thank you. Could you please kindly refrain from clapping? We'll move on to the next person, which is Vicky. Is Vicky available?
Good evening, my name's Vicky. In reference to the council plan strategic objective 4.1, is responsible financial decision-making the term that will be used to justify selling off our community-run services to private developers for more apartments after the two-year lease ends? If this is not the case, how does a two-year lease with no further renewal provide any benefits or security for staff, families and children for 18 services? How will council reassure the community that this will not happen? In reference to council plan strategic objective 4.2, is council optimising services now with state government-funded building blocks grants to sell off in two years at a higher price to privately-owned early childhood franchises? If the selling of council assets is not a consideration, surely we deserve to have reinsurance of this. Continuity and stability of Darabben families to access community-run early childhood services should be a priority. A five-year lease agreement will support this and reduce the anxiety of the unknown after the two-year lease agreement. Our children deserve the quality care of community and not-for-profit services, not privately-owned large franchises that view children as dollar signs. Lastly, in reference to council plan strategic objective 4.3, how will council transform the service delivery models? The council report is unclear and very broad objectives. Community engagement needs to be more transparent, and objections to the new lease agreement should be taken seriously. We are a community facility, people pay their rates and expect community facilities. Why are you trying to hurt our community?
Thank you, I appreciate your time, and everyone who has come here this evening. Councillors, before we enter into the debate, this is the time that we can now ask questions to our officers. Do I have any councillors that would like to ask questions to our officers, considering after hearing the submissions? Councillor Demetriades.
Thank you, may. I wanted to ask, have any kindergartens or childcare centres already entered into a new lease agreement with council for the period beyond the 31st of December 2023?
Chris?
Thank you, councillor Demetriades, through you, may. There is one kindergarten which runs through to the end of 2028. That was the East Preston Kindergarten, which was funded by the state government in the end of 2022, and council ended into a new lease agreement with government and the operator at that point in time.
Councillor Demetriades, you have another question?
Thank you, may. Yes, has Darabben been negotiating with any providers prior to this resolution? And if so, what terms has Darabben been negotiating?
Thank you.
Through you, again, may. I have no knowledge of any providers that council have been negotiating with. We would have to take that question on notice and seek the advice from our early services team.
Councillor Demetriades?
Thank you. Darabben's timeframe is very tight with the officer recommendation submission hearing on the 11th of December, and Darabben's final council meeting of the year on the 18th of December, and the lease is expiring on the 31st of December. So if a new lease arrangement is not signed by the 30th of December, 31st of December I should say, what happens then?
Through you, may. The leases likely go into an overholding status, and council would confirm the same to the providers.
Does that mean that the lease reverts to market rates?
Through you, may. No, it wouldn't. It would just continue on the same terms and conditions, just on a monthly basis.
And does the policy, does the policy that we currently consider set a precedent for other council-owned properties like sports clubs, community houses and neighbourhood houses?
The lease and licensing policy, which is in draft at the moment, doesn't cover sporting and seasonal licences, but it does cover all the other leases and licences that council are considering and have...
Councillor, your decision tonight doesn't relate to a policy, so the decision tonight doesn't have a bearing on other facilities at all. It is true, as Mr Ryan has explained, that there is a policy in development that isn't, hasn't come to council for consideration yet. That will happen in due course.
Councillors, are there any other questions that you'd like to ask? Councillor Messina, you're online, yes? Thank you.
Thank you, may, through you, may. I've got a couple of questions, because I think where the directive of this debate's going somewhere else.
Yes, okay, go ahead, thank you.
My first question is, can we have an officer explain what community engagement means, please?
For this particular item, you mean as in what type of engagement they will be having for this item?
Yeah, I'd like an officer to explain this particular item and what community engagement means.
Yeah, for this item, because community engagement will vary from item to item. So it's on this one.
But specifically what this item means? Because I think we're directing this item to somewhere else where it is not what is on the table. So can we please talk about what this item means? What we actually...
Through you, may. This item for discussion is to proceed to community engagement on a decision to renew the leases, the 18 kindergarten and childcare leases, for a term of two years. On the terms that are listed in the document itself, there are just minor changes to the maintenance and statutory and utility cost recoveries. In relation to the community engagement, we are required to go to community engagement under section 115 of the Local Government Act for any lease and licensing council enters into where the market rental, annual market rental is greater than $100,000 per annum, or the lease is longer than 10 years. So we will actually be going to community engagement on the, on this proposal, under that basis.
Thank you. May, I have a further, two more questions. And one of my questions is, Darabben council during the budget committed a fairly substantial amount to continuing care for our younger generation in terms of the children in the municipality. Can we unpack what that commitment was from this council, just briefly? And how does that compare to other councils in the neighbouring municipality? If you happen to know that answer.
May, in terms of the matter in front of you tonight, I don't, I haven't prepared sort of detailed broader information about, on hand, about the funding in the budget. Certainly, one of the public questions asked about that, and I provided a response earlier in the day about council's commitment.
Could I have that reaffirmed, please, may, in terms of what that monetary value was?
So from memory, I think councillors' capital works programme has 8.25 million provided for over the next four years.
Thank you. My next question through you, may, is, just in relation to if council was to change the trading terms, what does an option mean in relation to a lease? Could an officer please explain that?
Yeah, through you, may. Depending upon how an option is set up, whether it's exercisable by the tenant or exercisable by the landlord or both, it enables the either party who has got that privilege to exercise or that right to exercise the option to enter into a further lease for the terms that are stipulated in the original lease document.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have councillor Hannon. Do you still have your hand up? No?
One question's been answered, thank you, may.
Okay. Councillor Demetriades, yeah? Go ahead.
Thank you, may. Just following on from one of councillor Messina's question about consultation. Just in terms of the type of consultation that we're going to provide the community, from my understanding, based on the response that's been given, is that it's an inform the community consultation, which was very, which is what we did with the waste charge? So is that correct, that it's informing the community rather than actually going and asking them their opinion and providing feedback?
So what's planned is consultation, which means we're seeking feedback and seeking submissions. There's a hearing of submissions normally scheduled, in fact, ahead of the decision. And that type of consultation is what council's community engagement policy specifies for this type of decision.
Sorry, may, is that the inform model?
No, inform isn't the same as consultative consultation. It's informing is when we're explaining something to the community and there isn't an opportunity for influence or feedback. What we are proposing does have, we're seeking submissions and feedback from community so that council can fully consider that when it makes its decision.
Thank you, may, thanks for explaining that. I also wanted to ask just another question in regards to the act. Now, it was said that we have to go to community consultation because there was two tiers. One was that it was over 100,000, and the other one was that the lease was for 10 years. However, there is a provision in that particular act that says that it wasn't in council's budget, which is why we have to go to community consultation. So why didn't council actually put in their budget the continuing leases for the 2023 year? Was this...
Councillor Demetriades, through me.
Oh, sorry, yes. So was it, so why hasn't council actually put in their budget that, that we should, the continuing leases, is my question.
Through you, may. It's my understanding of section 115, and I stand to be corrected, that where council does have, does show its budget for individual properties, that it does not then need to go to community engagement. It's, so if we had shown it, we wouldn't need to go to community engagement. But given that the, all those leases are virtually on a peppercorn rent, there's nothing really the detail into the budget itself. So under section 115, we'll be going out because it is over 100,000 per annum.
Sorry, may. Just, so why wasn't it included in the budget, is the question? I understand it was peppercorn rent, but there's a lot of communities' assets that are, we do offer peppercorn rent, but they are in the budget. Why wasn't childcare services in the budget?
So we would have needed to specifically itemise it in the budget, which hasn't been council's practice. And so it may be possible in future, but it's not what's happened in the budget that's, that we've adopted recently.
Thank you, may. So was council planning on not going ahead with renewing contracts? Is that why it wasn't in the budget after the 31st of December? I still am not getting an answer as to why it wasn't in the budget.
Point of order, may.
Hang on, councillor Demetriades?
I have a point of order, this is contrary. Point of order, may. It's under 10.1. This is a, continues a tedious repetition of something already said. The question's been asked twice and answered twice. It shouldn't be allowed to be asked a third time.
Thank you, I'll take that on board. We'll move on to any other councillors that would like to ask any further questions in reference to this? Okay, I possibly have a question. Was there any other consideration apart from a two-year lease that was going to be offered as a recommendation?
To you, may. It was discussed with the advent of the lease and licensing policy to look at a three-year term, but given the, we're looking to restructure, and I know it's not part of the discussion tonight, lease and licensing policy, it was, the consideration was brought forward to two years.
Okay, so we're talking about a restructure of a policy and not actual kindergartens as such? Because obviously, there seems to be a lot of apprehension, quite an impact. And we've got a lot of people here this evening, particularly volunteers, parents, that are here this evening and quite concerned regarding their strategic plan going forward. And when they see something that's for only two years, I think they jump to thinking that council's actually thinking of shutting down or considering shutting down kindergartens. I would gather that that's not the case, would that be correct in saying that or asking that question?
Yes, may, that is not the case. I believe that was discussed during the week with the service providers.
I think it's important for those who are listening online to hear that. If there are no further questions, then I will thank you to our officers if there are no further questions. There are further questions? Okay. If, thank you to our officers. Okay, councillors, we'll move into the agenda item. Do I have a mover? Councillor Demetriades, do I have a second, or?
Yeah, may, I have an alternate motion.
Okay, no problem.
I've circulated it to all councillors.
Thank you.
May, can I ask a question about this?
Considering the debate that we're in, normally we would not ask questions. However, I will in this particular case.
Sorry, may, I can't allow that motion, because we actually need to do engagement, as Mr Ryan explained previously. I don't, I need advice, but I believe that's ultra virus. I don't think you have the power. Well, you could pass that motion, council, but I think you'd be in breach of section 115, and I just need to check.
Thanks.
With Mr Ryan before on that. I, as CEO, my part of my duty is not to allow a motion that may put you in breach.
Thanks, may. That was going to be my question about whether this breaches the act.
Okay, thank you. I think I've had advice now of the CEO. Councillor Demetriades?
Yes, may. So in light, so I was going to raise an amendment of the alternate motion seen above, which is to, I just go straight into a five-year lease. But as we've heard, we can't do that. We have to go to community consultation because it wasn't in our budget. Can I raise the alternate, the other motion that I've also circulated as well? Which is to, which, yeah.
You certainly can. So we'll just check with our officers to take that one down. Councillor Demetriades, this is the other one, is this correct? Confirm that this is yours?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, councillors. I have councillor Demetriades as the mover, and councillor Lawrence as the second in reference to this item. Councillor Demetriades?
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to thank everyone who took the time at short notice to come out to tonight's meeting and to ask questions and make submissions to Darabben. In Darabben, we have 18 council-owned locations for early years service associations, as mentioned in the report. and all provide critical early education and care to our communities. These centres are at the heart of our community and have been at the forefront of some of the best examples across the state of early education. We are leaders in this space and we should all be proud of that. But right now, services are worried, as we've heard. We can see this in the questions posed tonight and in the emails we've all received and the phone calls. Across multiple councils, including Glenira, Port Phillip, Knox and others, there have been a trend away from community-run early childhood sen- education in favour of privatisation. As we've heard, in some councils, councils, a change in lease arrangements, very similar to this, came before the council actually proposed to increase cost to centres or to sell multiple centres. So in that context, I think Darabben should be very careful in its next steps in relation to this sector. And the message we are sending to centres and families about the value, their value and our responsibility to provide them security in the long term. Our community, uh, and hardworking childcare and kindergarten service, services deserve certainty. And this is why I'm proposing this, um, amendment. A lease of two years with no option for an extension puts centres in a state of extreme uncertainty, as we've heard. It's, it effectively leaves them in limbo while council works towards an unknown future lease policy, making it extremely difficult to plan for enrolments, staffing, resources or capital upgrades, which many centres want in order to increase their capacity with the expansion of three and four-year-old kinder. Short leases leave centres with difficulties in planning strategically for their futures, applying for grants, in attracting and retaining staff and overall providing insecurity for children and families. We should be supporting these centres to have certainty. And that's why I'm, um, amending the motion to provide for five-year leases with terms the same as their current terms. Five year, five years gives early childcare and kindergarten service providers more options to hold on to staff. In an already challenging sector, taking away job security will make it harder to hold on to our teachers and harder to retain good teachers for our community. These providers create the first classrooms for our little ones, setting the stage for a lifelong love of learning. We have a moral and social responsibility to augment that and to prioritise that and indeed to invest in that. It's an investment in future generations and it's exactly the kind of investment ratepayers expect from their local government. I hope all councillors will stand with me in supporting this amendment.
Good times.
After all these passionate submissions we have received tonight. Thank you.
I have councillor Lawrence as a second. I, councillor.
Sorry, Mayor, um, I can't see what's been put up as the alternate to, um, councillor Demetriadis. It's not the one that she circulated because there's a more writing in red. So I can't even read what we're debating.
So can I kindly please have one of our officers to email councillor Messina the amendment? Before we go into the next person who'd like to debate on the item? Just bear with once, one moment, councillor Messina.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
No, absolutely. Councillors, when you were speaking on this item, can you kindly please speak to what the agenda item is about? Councillor Messina has been forwarded to. Do you have that now?
Thank you, Mayor. I have now confirmed that it's sitting there and I'm about to read it. But I'll, um, wait for the debate to continue and I'll have a read. Thank you very much for your patience.
I have councillor Demetriadis as a mover. I have councillor Lawrence as a second. Councillor Lawrence, would you like to speak on the item? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Yes, um, and, um, yeah, look, uh, I, I'm sure there's no intention, uh, of the council of a, a large-scale privatisation of community, uh, care and childcare and, uh, kindergartens. In fact, I think we're discussing this in many, um, of the councils here. Families and relatives and friends have enjoyed community-run childcare centres because of the excellent quality and that it helps build our community. Um, so, um, it is unfortunate that other councils do other things and create impressions. So the reason I'm supporting the, the idea of putting out to consultation the notion of five-year kinder, uh, five-year leases, is that I think we should, um, be very clear to the community about a long-term commitment to this sector. And, um, you know, and I think that that's, um, you know, we are about building a community. We're about people ageing in place. We are about using our collective resources to help people raise families, in fact, to develop a community. Um, so, um, so to, um, but we do live in a dangerous age of privatisation, uh, we all know. So I think having the five-year, uh, lease in the consultation will send the correct message. Um, and, uh, you know, it's also not just for the parents, um, in the community. Uh, we do know this sector is under incredible stress. There's quite a new amount of federal funding involved because of the balancing of work and, and, and raising children. So, um, we need to send a message that we are a hundred percent behind this sector to the staff and potential staff. Because right now at the moment, um, across the whole of Melbourne, um, uh, getting a place is difficult and retaining staff is one of the biggest challenges for the sector.
Thank you. Your time's up.
Uh, um, a good amendment to, to spread, uh, a good message.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Councillors, do we have any other councillors like to speak? Councillor Hannon?
Um, I have, uh, proposed amendment to this motion, Mayor. Um, uh, it was shared, uh, by, by officers with councillors this afternoon. And I wonder if we could, um, have that put up, please?
Sure. Do our officers, if we can kindly have councillor Hannon's amendment to be put up on screen? Councillor Hannon, is that your amendment? And I want to confirm also, councillor Messina, are you able to read that amendment? If not, then I'll have our officers to actually email that to you.
Yeah, I can't see that amendment. Thank you.
Yes, that is the one I meant. I'll wait for councillor Messina.
Okay, councillors, I've just been informed that this is not an amendment because it's very different to councillor Demetriadis. So therefore it would have to be treated in a different way, as an alternative, rather than as a, an amendment.
Mayor, as, as you allowed with councillor Demetriadis to slightly change hers, gi- give an advice on the, on the, um, I would ask that you would allow me to do similar, um, to take out, um, the sections one and two. Um, uh, take out section eight. Um, um, and um, section five would need to be added in place of, I have to look back to councillor Demetriadis's mo- motion.
Councillors, I'm, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna ask for an adjournment for a couple of minutes so we get this right, because I think it's really important. Um, I apologise, yes, once again. I think it's important that we get this right rather than play it on the floor and not have it right and then we're just playing it out. So can you kindly, um, have a allow a five-minute break? Thank you.
I'll just wait for a bit of silence and our offices will be back online again. So we'll go back to where we were, which was councillor Hanlon had an amendment.
Thank you, Mayor, and apologies for the confusion created here. I take the point that this is, as it is there, is substantially different. I think it'd be simple to go back to the motion proposed by councillor Dimitri Artis, and I have just a couple of very small changes to that. So the first change would be where it says on the third line, five year, just to say, to change that to, in brackets, two years plus three year option. The second change is after the sentence where it ends, council annual fees and charges schedule, to add the words for the first two years. Yeah, you may wish to highlight that. Thank you, that's it.
Do I have a seconda in reference to councillor Rennie?
I don't accept the change.
And then I was going to ask whether you accept that. If not, then I have a seconda. Thank you. We'll go straight into the debate. Councillor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mayor, and sincere thanks to all the parents and community members for their ongoing contribution, first of all, to childcare in our community, and secondly, for taking the time to ask questions and come along tonight. It's a big effort. We hear you and we acknowledge the concerns and anxieties that have come from this issue. As we've heard from staff and from councillors tonight, Darabin Council is strongly committed to ongoing support for the community-owned childcare centre. We're currently providing almost 100% rental rebate. We've heard that our strategic plan commits us to continuing commitment. This has been approved by council multiple times for the years to come, for the many years to come. In fact, we actually have over $8 million budgeted for expansion for childcare facilities in the next few years. This is not a council that is backing away from childcare. And on a personal level, many councillors have sent their own kids to community childcare. We need to keep in mind the fact, however, that the council will shortly be consulting with the community in relation to a new policy for leasing and licensing across all properties, not just childcare centres. So I thank the officers as well for their work on this issue and their advice on this. And I believe that the amended motion here that I've proposed provides the right balance of giving assurance to community childcare centres.
Can I just ask you to stop? I know you've got 30 seconds left, sorry. But I need to see where councillor Messina is. Okay, councillor Messina, have you aware of what, can you see the amendment?
Yes, yes, sorry, I didn't realise the video was off, but I have been back since.
Okay, great, because it's part of the governance rules that if you're online, I must see you at all times. Thank you, and I apologise. You do have 30 seconds left.
Thank you. No worries. So I understand the concerns, but I think this provides the right balance for giving assurance to community childcare centres, continuing arrangements for at least two years and the option for another three, and bringing all centres into alignment for future years, noting there's one which has had an agreement passed already. And as we've also heard, the motion in front of us tonight is actually to go to community engagement on this decision, which is required under Local Government Acts for major leases. And we've heard from staff, this will provide meaningful opportunities for influence and feedback, including formal submissions. You know, it'll allow comment, not just on childcare, but more generally, what level of subsidy is appropriate, balancing our responsibilities for financial sustainability with our commitment to community care. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have councillor Rennie. Would you like to speak on the item?
I'll reserve, thanks.
No problem. Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Williams. I'd like to address my comments to this amendment, which I think dilutes what and goes off in another direction to what we were proposing, which was to try and demonstrate our commitment to community-run childcare. And the families who do the volunteer work, the running, the maintenance, the children who are the future of Darabin, who go to these centres and learn our culture, our Darabin community values, are not tenants. They're actually the owners. And I think we are... It's a pity councillor Greco isn't in this chamber, because he's far more erudite than I am. But this is where we're having a creeping corporatism come in here. And this is what people have been concerned about, when we begin to treat our communities tenants. And that we're the owners. We're not. We're custodians of a council who are here temporarily. Some of us less temporary than others. But so, you know, if we're going to draw a line about the corporatisation of our assets, and, you know, we've been through this so often, Clements Reserve, we're buying back. It's been bought by Borderworks, bought by Vic Roads, and now we've got to buy it back a third time. If we don't put a priority on raising the next generation, so this corporatisation, this thing of backing.
I apologise, councillor Lawrence, but I've just been aware and been told that in reference to this item, because it's still the original item, and it's not a change or a complete amendment, that you are actually speaking in reference to the original item.
I'm speaking against the amendment, because the amendment was rejected, the suggestion was rejected by the mover.
Sorry, councillor Lawrence, go ahead.
We've just heard last year from the Ombudsman report that 20% of the 100 complaints about us was that we don't follow up complaints and we don't listen. We've also got a community survey here tonight. We've heard clearly, people, the community wants stability for five years. They're going to have to face the cost rises of labour and to maintain new services and to maintain quality services. Let's not add the anxiety that years three will balloon out, that the corporatisation and the market application of rents will come in there.
Thank you.
Let's not go down this path.
Thank you. Are there any other councillors in reference to this item? Councillor Rennie as a seconda of the amendment?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I'm very confident that every councillor sitting around this table shares councillor Dimitri Artis's commitment to community-based kinder and childcare services in Darabin. But tonight, what we have before us is as much a governance and asset management matter as it is about community kinder. And I think that's at risk of being overlooked. It would be fair to say, and I think councillors all know this, that the leasing situation of various council properties is a bit like a dog's breakfast. And one of the reasons that's the case is because we haven't been guided by an overall leasing and licensing policy that sets out expectations for council staff, but also for community members. And how can we ever have good systems across all of council if we don't allow ourselves to be guided by policy? If we proceed down the path of a five-year lease that ignores future policy that might come before us in 12 months' time, where does that leave us in terms of trying to deliver on our governance and accountability responsibilities? This debate has been turned into something about whether we are committed to the future of kinder and childcare. That is not what this debate is about. This is a debate about whether we're committed to good governance and to making sure that our leasing and licensing across all portfolios of council is consistent, is fair, and is transparent. We have an opportunity to make that the case. We have an opportunity, through this amendment, to demonstrate our long-term commitment to the sector, a sector that I used as recently as this year, and, you know, for decades, and I'm very committed to. But part of our commitment has to be to deliver it with transparency and accountability. And so I urge councillors to support good governance, which I think is what councillor Hanlon has presented to us, whilst also giving the opportunity to provide more certainty to the sector that's asking for it.
You're over time. Thank you. Councillors, are there any further speakers in reference to this? Councillor Dimitri Artis?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't be supporting this amendment for a number of reasons. Firstly, it only secures two years for childcare and kindergartens with the option of a third, of three years after that. What that means is that we're only securing two years, and the option of the three year may not even come around at all, as far as this particular amendment goes. The other thing that I find concerning is that the annual fees and also the terms and conditions will only be for two years.
Point of order. I believe it's a misleading statement to say that it wouldn't provide for the further three years. It's certainly the intention of...
I said may.
I believe that when there's an option for further three years, it does allow for that, and I just seek clarification from the CEO.
Through you, Mayor, I understand that to me, an option in favour of the tenant, in other words, the tenant would have the absolute right to take the further three years as an option. Wouldn't be an option in favour of council, it'd be an option in favour of the tenant.
So the option would be for three years. I'm assuming that means that council will be able to... Sorry, is this part of my speech? Because, so the times, can we stop the time?
Through you, Mayor, you need to... I've answered the question on the point of order. You probably need to rule on the point of order, which is...
I accept the point of order, and our CEO has made clarification that there is a two-year and then plus a three-year option, which is in favour of what the tenant going forward. Councillor Dimitri Artis, and if you can kindly speak through me as you're speaking, rather than to the audience.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I was speaking through you, but I appreciate your comment. I also wanted to say that, so the two years are solid about the annual fee and the terms and conditions relating to outgoing utilities and maintenance. However, this doesn't mean that in the further three years, those terms and conditions will remain and the same as the annual fee. So what that means is, after the third, in the third year onwards, council could change all those additional costs that they currently aren't paying and make it harder for families and centres to engage these services. So I certainly won't be supporting this amendment. I did note that councillor Hanlon said that Darabin is strongly committed to childcare and kindergarten, and I really hope that is the case. However, if council was so strongly committed, I don't see why we can't actually just give the centres a five-year lease, as whether we've been doing all along. Two years with the option of three and potential in the third year to increase rates, increase annual fees, utilities and maintenance, I don't personally believe is a strong commitment to kindergartens and childcare centres. I also note that this... I also note that's up.
The time is up now.
Oh, sorry, my apologies, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers in reference to this on the amendment? If there are no further speakers in reference to this, I'm happy to put the item to vote. We're voting on the amendment of councillor Hanlon's amendment to this item. I'll put that to vote. All those in favour? I have councillor Hanlon, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy and councillor Messina. All those against, councillor Dimitri Artis, councillor Lawrence, councillor Williams. That item has now been accepted. That amendment will be now put forward as part of the amendment to the officer's recommendation.
Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment. It's incredibly simple. I've circulated it to our councillors, and I'm hoping it'll be agreeable to the mover and seconda.
Okay, there's this been amendment, that circulated.
Then our P O on the screen is five and six.
Is that acceptable to the mover and the seconda?
That would be councillor Dimitri Artis and councillor Lawrence. Doesn't councillor Hanlon become the mover in the second?
You are the original, and so is councillor Lawrence. So, okay, will you be accepting that? Yes or no? And councillor Lawrence, yes or no?
Yeah, happy to accept that.
Councillor Lawrence? Okay, so both the mover and seconda is happy to accept that. Councillor Rennie?
I might now speak to the motion, if, good, I haven't already spoken to the motion.
Thank you.
I'm really pleased tonight to be supporting a motion that is going to assist council in aligning the leases for childcare centres and kindergartens with the future leasing and licensing policy that's going to come before council. But more particularly, I'm pleased that we have moved an amendment to give kinders and childcare centres more certainty, and I hope that this will assist those services to overcome the anxiety. And I apologise really sincerely that the way this was communicated has created unnecessary anxiety that I don't think needed to be in this situation. My kids attended Raleigh Street Childcare Centre. They were there, across the three of them, for eight years. And earlier this year, I was housing a small homeless family that made use of Thornwick Kindergarten, and I was so impressed by the access and equity efforts that were gone to and by the extraordinary service that that kinder offered a very vulnerable family. These services are so very important, because they set the quality benchmark against which every service, including private services, I think, has to then meet. And that driver of quality, I think, is one of the reasons why it's so important that we maintain these services now and long into the future. These services also create and maintain community. They generate friendships that last for a lifetime, and I've seen that with the friendships that I continue to have with families from childcare 18 years ago. And they are an excellent use of council facilities and something that this council should be very proud that we continue to support. I want that to be the message that people see tonight and that you hear in the next item that we're going to debate 9.6, where this council is going to invest many millions of dollars more in providing excellent quality facilities for kinder and childcare. But we have governance responsibilities, and that's what we've attempted to address tonight.
Councillors, are there any other speakers in reference to this? Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Look, I probably, like councillor Rennie, I'm a bit surprised by where we started with this debate. I also had the benefit of, in fact, the same childcare centre, and everything that councillor Rennie said in relation to the value of both our council council facilities that are managed by community members, and also, I would say, some of our private facilities that operate on a very similar basis, is that these are the places where you build your communities. And we know for so many people, this is their first entry point into what can be a wonderful time, connecting with other families, building those support networks, and certainly finding a way to be part of the community, which might not have been possible without that experience of connecting through one of these centres. I say all that because one of the biggest challenges, and I've had friends who've been presidents of kinder committees and childcare committees, and I know the stress, and I hear that tonight, I hear that from people that have come here tonight. One of the biggest stresses is actually having certainty that you need for your staff, who are absolute diamonds, they are absolutely legendary human beings, is giving them the certainty that they need. And what we have here, in the favour of our centres, is that five-year commitment, which means that not only can we ensure that there's that continuity of those lease agreements, but it actually, and I would just say this, it actually gives an opportunity, I think, for centre management in each area and each centre, the ability to actually look pretty clearly at what the terms and conditions would be in their favour and what they'd like to see. So that opens up a conversation, I think, potentially more in the centre's favour than council's favour, and I think that's actually important to state that here. The other thing I would just say, though, is that the points that councillor Rennie has added, I think, are the most significant points of all to this, apart from the commitment to the five years, which is really saying that we are absolutely in it for community-run childcare, and we're not walking away. And anyone that suggests otherwise is misleading the community.
Thank you. Are there any other councillors? Councillor Newton? And then I've got councillor Messina.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I'm speaking in support of this motion. And I want to say very clearly to the community watching online, the community in the next room, that we are not Glanir, we are not Knox. We are very much sticking in with childcare, for community-run childcare. I believe our officer spoke about an $8 million commitment over the next four years, and we're also addressing this at 9.6. I know for me personally, I was on a waitlist, you know, I know how desirable the council childcare centres are. I know for me personally, I was on a waitlist, you know, I know how desirable the council childcare centres are. And I fully respect having, my son is now going to a private childcare centre, which I'm also really, really happy with. And I know how incredible it feels to be able to leave him in the morning and go and do my eight-hour day in the office and to know that he's well cared for. So I really want to thank all the educators and all the parents who get involved in these committees. We do want to hear from you. This is going out to community engagement after we hopefully support this motion. So yeah, big thank you, tell us what we think, tell us what you think. And please be assured, we are not stepping away from childcare in any way. This gives you certainty for the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Newton. I have councillor Messina.
Thank you. I'll just keep it brief, I just want to echo what my fellow colleagues have said. I'm not only a first-generation user of childcare and kindergartens, I'm a grandmother who takes her grandson to a childcare centre. Can I just say, I heard the words legends and diamonds. The greatest gift that a parent who's working can be given is when they go to a childcare centre or a kindergarten, that the person they take there is safe. What you do on a daily basis is unmeasurable for parents and grandparents. And I want to echo that. This is not about anything else more than governance. And I want to apologise, the debate and the discussion went in a different area. So it is purely nothing more than governance. And I hope that message is clear, because we're not shunning away from anything else. I think it's important that you hear that. And I want to say thank you for looking after the jewels that we dearly give to you to look after on a daily basis. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Messina. If there are no more further speakers, I'll put that item to vote. Okay, write a reply, but I'm not sure, because we don't have anything that's in reference to a right of reply.
There's no right of reply on an amended motion.
Councillor Hanon loses his right of reply. Yep, you're right. Thank you councillor Demetriadis.
Mayor, apologies, point of order, it's contrary to the meeting rules. Could we review those rules, please? Because it's my understanding that there's no right of reply on an amended motion and it's now an amended motion.
That's correct.
She's not doing a right of reply, she's actually speaking on the substantive motion. No, what do you mean no?
This motion is an amended motion with respect because the motion was put by councillor Demetriadis, seconded by councillor Lawrence, it was subsequently amended by councillor Hanon. So the motion is an amended motion and therefore there is no right of reply under the governance laws, rules.
Sorry, I'd like clarity on that. I'd like to see the governance section, because my understanding is this is the substantive motion and I'd like to speak on the substantive motion.
Three, may I, and governance rule four point eight seven says neither the mover of the original motion nor the mover of the amendment has a right of reply to that amended motion. So I think councillor Rennie is correct. It's under the miscellaneous rules for an amendment.
It's amended motion, but this is now the substantive motion, it's not an amendment.
I'll just find for you councillor, three, may I just find for you definition of amended motion? Just give me one second, please. I think, I think for, three, may I, I think four point eight seven still applies. Four point eight six says if an amendment is carried, the motion is amended, then becomes the substantive motion before the meeting. But seven then says that neither the mover nor the mover of the amendment has a right applied to that motion, to that amendment. So I think there's no right of reply in this case, based on my interpretation of the governance rules. It's your ruling, may I?
If an amendment is carried, the motion as amended then becomes the substantive motion before the meeting. Neither the mover or the original motion nor the mover of the amendment has a right of reply to that amendment motion. So councillor Demetriadis, you have no right. Thank you.
And thank you, mayor. I'd like to raise a point of order then on the speech by councillor Messina and councillor Rennie, who said that it's nothing more than governance.
Excuse me.
I have to explain my, yes, I can. I can raise a point of order any time in the meeting, please check the governance rules.
No, we are now moving to now.
I'm sorry, mayor, I've raised a point of order and I can do that any time in the meeting. Please check the governance rules.
And your point of order number?
Point of order ten point one G, it's misleading or false. And that is that what was stated was that nothing, this is nothing more than governance. And that's in, I personally believe that's incorrect, because we've also got a lease, we've heard from the officer that there's a twenty-year lease in place for a childcare centre. And that's.
Okay, thank you councillor Demetriadis. Point of order's taken. I'll now put the item to vote, all those in favour?
Sorry, mayor, you didn't rule on the point of order.
I said I did accept it.
Thank you.
I'm now putting the item to vote, all those in favour of the amended item, that it's now the substantive item that has been carried unanimously. Thank you. Can we ask councillor Greco to please come back into the chamber? And we'll move on to nine point six. As we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is nine point six. Kindergarten expansion programme, do I have a mover in reference to this item? Councillor Lawrence as the mover, do I have a seconder? I had three hands go at once, I think I saw councillor Rennie as the seconder, councillor Lawrence? Okay, yep. So in reference to this item, we do have an amendment from our officers as the officer's recommendation. Are you aware of that as the mover and seconder? Councillor Lawrence as the mover, are you aware of that amendment from the officers? Yes? Okay. And councillor Messina, you are aware of that amendment and you can see that? Yep, excellent. Okay, councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Williams, thank you for that. This is being alluded to in the previous debate by councillor Rennie and others, is an important motion that came be, number six, nine point six, for investing over eight million dollars into expanding our capacity in terms of kindergartens. And this is an important issue right across the city. And we've seen in the past also these needs moving waves up and down the city. And of course, as we are a changing city in terms of housing, it's going to be important, this expansion. So this is a, not just about words, this is about millions of dollars transforming the capacity of this community to respond with quality kindergartens and childcare. So I'll just recommend the motion.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Councillor Rennie as a seconder, would you like to speak on the item?
Certainly. I'm really proud of the investment we are making in securing the future of more kindergarten places, not just those that currently exist, because we know that there are going to be future kindergarten gaps. And we want to make sure that every child in Darabin has access to first-class quality kindergarten, particularly given the state government's commitment to universal three-year-old kinder. It's a fantastic commitment, one that we all support, but one that needs to be backed up with infrastructure. Because there's no kinder without a building. That's not entirely true, I'd have to say, because I have fabulous experience of the Bush kinder. But, but you do need the bricks and mortar. And so this is council's commitment to delivering the bricks and mortar that are required to ensure the universal rollout of three-year-old kinder. And that is important, because all the evidence points to the fact that children who have access to quality three and four-year-old kinder do better throughout their whole education and beyond. And that's particularly true for children from more vulnerable families. And so from an access and equity point of view and a social justice point of view, one of the most powerful interventions we can make to ensuring future wellbeing of all residents is to make this investment. I'm also really pleased with where we've landed in terms of the choice of sites. So we have a building that wasn't currently used as a kinder in Raleigh Street that's going to create more kinder places. We've got a project that's shove-ready at Mary Community Childcare and Kinder. And beyond that, we've identified an important site in Maryborough Avenue. But we've also recognised that we want biggest bang for our buck. And so beyond that, we're going to do further investigations and make sure that we invest in places where our dollar will create the most places so that there is the greatest benefit to the greatest number of kids.
Thank you. Now, because we are quite behind in reference to tonight's agenda, and I'm worried that we will not get through everything, if we allow everybody to speak, I think we'll go way, way, way behind. I'm only going to ask for now for movers to speak, unless you're an objector. So if you're going to object in reference to this item, feel free to speak on the item. If not, then I'm going to ask for it to be voted on. So councillors, would you, is there any councillors that are objecting to this item? If not, then I'm putting the item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, we'll go back to the original agenda run in order. Nine point one, which is the annual report for 2022, 2023. Do I have a mover in reference to this item?
Mayor, could I, just before the item is moved, there's an error in the report. And just in relation to my attendance at council meetings, it's saying that I attended less meetings than the actual fact that I did attend. It's on page one hundred and thirty, and I think that that should be corrected.
Thank you, that has been noted. Councillors, do I have a mover in reference to this item? We have councillor Rennie, and do we have a seconder? Councillor Greco, councillor Rennie?
It's always a pleasure in many ways to look at an annual report and reflect on the very fine work that takes place in this organisation every year. It is a requirement of the Local Government Act. And it's, I suppose, so lovely to look at the work that staff have done and the work that they've done with community. Because our staff work hard every day, whether that is collecting the rubbish bins or delivering community services, running the libraries, giving kids immunisations. They do all of these things and much of it is unseen, except by those people who actually directly use the service. And so an annual report is a celebration of all of that work. And I'm sure that some of my colleagues will pick out individual bits that are really important. It is fair to note that we haven't made as much progress in some areas as we might have liked. There are numerous reasons for that. You know, the legacy of Covid still wears, I suppose, on this council and others around the place. But I commend the report to you and I really hope that everyone will take the time to read it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak on the item?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I just want to add a few points in relation to the annual report and just to highlight some of the very positive things that we've done, which have been of keen interest to me. One is that how we've advocated to protect the Preston market through a strong public campaign. That's some essential work that we've done and which has actually delivered us a good outcome. I understand that some councillors here, sitting around us, were not that enthusiastic in relation to the outcome that we did achieve. But I think it's a very good outcome that we have achieved in terms of better planning controls that actually protect the market from being demolished. The other thing that I want to point out in relation to our annual report is the intercultural centre that was officially opened in March. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. It's a, the intercultural centre is something that goes back nearly twenty-five years that the ethnic communities in the city of Darabin have been requesting and demanding. And I think we have a great centre, which is, I can see there's been quite eagerly used by a lot of groups. And the feedback that I get is that the community is quite happy with that outcome. The other thing that I like to highlight in the report is particularly the female participation in sport. And one statistic that really stuck out to me was that it increased from twenty-four percent to forty-one percent. So we're really making a headway in relation to increasing the participation of women in sport. It's off the back of the Matildas and their great achievement and how that inspired a lot of women to participate in sport and actually have access to sport. And finally, I think, which is relevant to the debate that I could not participate in, is that the Reservoir East Family Centre was established in February two thousand and twenty-three, which is delivering sixty-six additional community-managed kinder places. So that's quite significant, that our investment in kinder, particularly in areas in our city where there is need and where there is, in some areas in our city, as we clearly know that there's this and that. And the final point that I would raise is that we visited sixty thousand homes in terms of support visits. And that's a testament to the fact that this council, unlike many other councils that have privatised their aged care services, this council has maintained their aged care services. And as a result of that, we find that our officers are very dedicated and we're actually making a massive contribution in terms of assisting people to stay home and to actually have, as councillor Lawrence often mentions, is to age in place.
Thank you, your time's up.
Quite significant achievements and I commend the officers for the work that they've done.
No problem, thank you. I'll let you go over time, because I, as I said, I will not be asking for councillors to continually ask to speak on the item. Yeah, you're nearly three minutes instead of two.
It's fuzzy, that's why.
Councillors, if you're not objecting, if, do I have any objectors in reference to this item? Councillors, if not, then I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, we'll move over to the next item, which is Darabin Annual Community Survey Results. We have an officer's recommendation there. There's an amendment on that one. So councillors, if you have any questions to our officers, now is the time before I ask that we enter into the debate. And do I have a mover and a seconder in reference to this? Councillor Rennie as the mover, councillor Greco as a seconder, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. It wasn't actually my intention to move this item tonight, because I'm not sure that people want to hear what I have to say about it, which is that it's never great to reflect on community survey results that show a decline in community attitudes towards council. community survey results that show a decline in community attitudes towards council. The decline is strongest in the areas of governance and decision-making. And we can say a lot about the reasons for this decline. We can talk about Preston Market, we can talk about the EBA and, you know, industrial action. But I think the thing we should be talking about is our conduct as councillors, and the operations of this council. And I think it's incumbent upon every councillor here not to look at the external factors that might be driving those results, but to look at ourselves and the way this council operates. In doing so, I'd encourage everybody to line up the annual community satisfaction surveys against terms of council, and to see what's been happening over the last 10 years. And then to actually ask ourselves, what is our role, and what does the community expect of us? I hope that this is something that we can turn around, and that we can see a different trend emerging in future years. But when we have debates that are interrupted, when we have point-scoring, when we bring politics into the chamber, when we get on social media and have a go at our council, and criticise our council services, when your friends are worse than your enemies, you know, can you be entirely surprised if your community satisfaction results aren't what you hoped they would be? And so it's my challenge to all of us, and that includes myself, to actually think about what we can do differently. Because I know that the staff in this organisation come to work every day doing their damnedest for our community, and working their butts off to try and deliver great services to the community. And I want for us to be able to say the same about ourselves.
Thank you, councillor Greco. As a second, would you like to speak on the item?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Williams. Look, councillor Rennie has mentioned some points, and we need to reflect on some of the points that councillor Rennie has mentioned. I also note that, and I want to commend officers for being very upfront in the report of highlighting the general decline in satisfaction by the community in terms of council. I've always been a believer that we need to be upfront about things, you know. It's no use trying to sort of sugarcoat, you know, satisfaction surveys and feedback from the community. And so I commend the officers for the fact that they've stated it as it is, and put it out there for the community, and also for councillors to reflect on. Part of the reasons were what perhaps councillor Rennie has said, but also I think the report does mention that we need to do more in other areas. For example, we need to do more in relation to management performance, communication, consultation. We need to do more in relation to basic services. And I believe that we need an approach that talks about, you know, going back to our basics in terms of providing for the community. I mean, the community has spoken, I mean, and the community has said to us that basically we need to listen more to what the community wants from council and expects from council. Of course, there will be a lot of noise, often there is a lot of noise. But the survey is done in a scientific manner, and we have to acknowledge what the survey says. Also, I've noted in the survey about Preston Market, the dissatisfaction that the community has expressed in relation to council in regards to Preston Market, notwithstanding, as I mentioned in the previous agenda, notwithstanding the achievements that council made and the investment that it made. But again, I think councillors need to reflect.
Just to let you know, your time is up, even though that time is incorrect.
Councillors need to reflect, but also councillors need to reflect whether we are actually listening to what the community wants and needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to let councillors know that that TV up there is incorrect. Okay. Okay. Do I have any objections in reference to this item? If not, then I'm going to put the item, you objecting to this item? Are you objecting? That was... You want to speak against? Okay?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor Williams. Yes, I'm speaking to this item, so that I can speak to this item. But I think it has been covered. Obviously, it's there on page 12, the rankings of the leadership. And we've got four very poor results, one still, one good result in regards to support for diversity, inclusion and fairness. So I think that needs to be stressed. But we've got four messages from the community that we really need to listen to. I don't agree with some of the parts of this report that allocate agency to external parties or external actions. And I think that the actual consultants we spoke to were very clear, those external parties don't have much influence. But I do want to speak to page 13, because this is actually linking the satisfaction with services and facilities. And what you see there is some excellent quality rankings, 8.3, 8.1, 7.8, for a range of services that we conduct. But down on the bottom, and this is where, if you want to improve your leadership, you need to improve doing things, not words, not attitudes, not postures. And that is litter collection in public areas, condition of the sealed roads and footpaths. These are in low sixes, and they need to be addressed. And action, I think, will speak louder than words in this. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour, that has been carried unanimously. We'll move over to the next agenda item, which is the Victorian Container Deposit Schemes. Councillors, do we have any questions in reference to this to our offices before we commence? Councillor Messina, you have a question?
No, ma'am. I was going to move the item.
Okay. Happy for you to move the item. Councillors, do I have a second in reference to this item?
Happy to second.
Councillor Newton as second. Okay, councillor Messina?
Thank you, mayor. I'll keep a brief. I want to start off with thanking the state government that began with the circular economy, where this actually process began starting to come into fruition. And I want to thank Minister De Ambrosio, Ingrid Stitt, and now Stephen Dipoulis, just to talk about resource recovery, because this is what Container Deposit Scheme is all about. It's all about resources, the recovery of the item, rather than discarding the item, it becomes an asset.
Can I just hang on a moment, just councillor Messina? I just want to double check. Oh, no, it's okay. Keep going. I thought councillor needed to declare something. Go on.
Okay. So I just wanted to emphasise that. And I just wanted to go through the motion of looking at just some statistical data. South Australia, back in 1977, started with the Container Deposit Scheme. They have a 70% containers return now. And we're far behind. We're one of the last states, if not, I think, the last state to introduce them. And this is about our Darabben community. We know they like the circular economy. We know they're environmentally friendly. This is about our advocacy point in saying, we would like some, where we would like some Container Deposit Schemes. I would love for the developer at Preston Market to put one there at Preston Market. I know Northland is actually highlighted as a place there, but I'd like to see some more municipality-wide outlets, some depot points, so that we can get that true circular economy going in our municipality, but also conscious that it's not a council service. It's important to know that this is a state government service, and the state government will be working with VIZI. But our advocacy point in ensuring that the rollout is what our community expects in terms of where they are located, our advocacy in that direction, and also the upkeep, because we know they're going to get pretty messy and ugly. And we just need to know that, the communication in terms of what, who's undertaken that, in terms of whose responsibility it is, it's not state government, it is not council, but it will be on the supplier of the container to ensure that it is properly maintained as well. So I look forward to the evolution and some statistical data to show the success of this. And I look forward to wine bottles being accepted one day, but we'll see. I'll drink to that anyway. But thank you.
Thank you, councillor Messina. Councillor Newton, as the second, would you like to speak on this item now?
Just briefly. Thank you, Mayor Williams. So definitely reading the report, I was also quite surprised that South Australia's been doing this since 1977, and Victoria's just getting sorted now. But I'm really glad we are. This council, for a long time, has really advocated for the circular economy. And I'd also like to particularly commend councillor Messina's work in that area over the last few years. It's really good to see this happening. I think this will be very much welcomed by our community. And I think that I'm pleased to see how well we're working with VIZI, and hopefully we'll be able to progress those three locations in point four. So very welcomed and very supportive of this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Dimitriades, are you speaking in opposition in reference to this item?
I actually have an amendment to raise.
Sure.
It's been circulated to the council.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just wait for that amendment to pop up on the screen. Is that your amendment, councillor Dimitriades?
Could I have the amendment email?
Yeah, I was just going to ask the same thing. And can councillor...
Yep.
There's apparently two versions. Can you please clarify?
Yes, thank you, mayor. This is my amendment that I was going to raise. I've already circulated it.
Okay. When was this circulated, as in?
On Saturday at 8:53pm.
It's a couple of days ago. Can we get that one up on the screen? That's the one? Thank you. I'll just give councillors a moment to read it. Councillor McCarthy?
Mayor, just because that's the first time I've seen this amendment, if we can just get advice from officers in relation to the financial or staffing implications for points five A and B, please?
Okay. Is that a possibility, please? Thank you.
So we have done sort of preliminary desktop assessments of most of those locations, and would be able to reach out to VIZI to seek their feedback within the timeframe that you're talking about providing a report back to council. What wouldn't be possible in that timeframe is, say, detailed investigations on any council sites, such that council could make a decision about whether to lease council sites. But we could sort of manage the work involved in that. I have interpreted point A with the reference to funding scope as meaning VIZI's funding scope. But that's the interpretation I've taken in reading that point.
Three, mayor, can I just clarify? It says it notes that council will undertake the additional investigations. I don't, I think this amendment needs to ask us to undertake the investigations, because we wouldn't do those. I'm just, I just think the header to these points, councillor Dimitriades, it just says, and notes that. And then I think...
Yes, so notes that council will undertake is an action. However, we can clarify that if we just put notes in front of one, two, three and four, and stop it at Container Deposit Scheme, just for greater clarity. But item five should still stay the same, because it is an action.
That's what I'm trying to get. Have you got that, Georgie? So I just need the clarity that you're asking us to do that, that's all. And three, mayor, Miss Rachel, can you clarify if there's additional cost, any additional cost to answer councillor McCarthy's part of that question? I'm not sure you did.
So on the timeframe we're talking about, we'd use council staff, so I wouldn't expect to incur additional cost for the high-level investigations that would be possible for a report in November. The risk that arises is to other work that those staff would be doing. So it would be our waste team, they're currently preparing for a tender, and it would be our property team who are currently working through, they're about to go to consultation on some leases.
Can I ask a question? So if our officers have to take on a new report, does that mean that they have to drop another report to do this one in its timeframe? Because I know that we are quite restricted regarding reports and council plan at the moment. And we were told not long ago that it was quite tight. I just want to know if for our officers to get this back in time, will that impinge on any other reports coming to council, or impact the council plan?
So, yes, I think there's a high risk it would.
Sorry, councillor Dimitriades, I had councillor McCarthy had a hand up for a question, and then I'll come back to you. Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, mayor. I won't go to the answer that we've been given, but probably just to understand better, if I'm correct, the councils can't, councillors can't propose amendments to an item that would incur a cost of $5,000 or more on the night of the meeting. If I can just get clarity in relation to that, because what I'm concerned about on two fronts, mayor, just to be clear about the purpose of the question, is work that will otherwise not be undertaken, because council will be doing the work that I understand VIZI would otherwise need to do. And secondly, what the cost of that work would be. It might not be money going out, but it's cost of staff time. So if we can get an indication there, and it's purely from the government's perspective, because we have knocked back amendments on that basis in the past.
Mayor, I've got it up.
That is correct. Can I get our officers is able to answer that, please?
I can give you a rough estimate of cost. I don't have an answer to the governance question particularly. We've just been conferring very roughly, I estimate, the work involved to be about two or three weeks, sort of full-time work, if I was pulling it together at a reasonably senior level in the organisation. Maths on the run. Sorry.
Mayor, can I suggest, sorry to interject, but I've just circulated an amendment to, for the investigation. I'm just wondering if that's acceptable to the second. I've just circulated an additional point, and perhaps that might address some of the concerns.
And I've also got an amendment that I could add to just make more clarity on this as well.
Okay, no problem. We'll just go through question time. So I'm not sure if that answered your question, councillor McCarthy. Were there any other questions in reference to this?
I think officers are still answering my question, mayor. So if you want to get to another question while they...
So three weeks' work at a senior officer's time is around about $9,000 worth.
Mayor, I'm happy to just make it a little bit clearer. So clearer. In point five, I'm happy to make it council undertake additional initial investigation. So it doesn't have to be a full-on investigation. It's just an initial investigation. And we can also have with VIZI of other potential refund points. So that would definitely reduce costs, because it's only just a very high-level investigation with VIZI as well.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I don't accept the amendment, but I'm happy to accept what the mover has circulated, if that's possible.
I'm happy to circulate that. I'm not happy to...
I'm sorry, that's dealing with another amendment. We're currently dealing with my amendment?
Yes, and we have been asked if we accept it or not, and I don't accept it.
That's fine. Thanks.
So you'll need a second in reference to this, councillor Dimitriades?
It's anyone.
Councillor Greco? Councillor Dimitriades?
Thank you, ma'am. It's great to hear that council is committed to assisting with the rollout of Victoria's Container Deposit Scheme, and has been working to identify suitable collection sites across Darabben to ensure our residents will be able to fully participate in the programme. I think it's safe to say that we all know that the successful implementation of Victoria's Container Deposit Scheme is going to be a vital part of not only boosting recycling rates across our suburbs here in Darabben, but also critically...
but also critically will contribute to the broader works underway across the state to create a truly circular economy for Victoria. We know that Darabben Council was the first government anywhere in the world to declare a climate emergency. Darabben's Climate Emergency Plan outlines the leadership, advocacy and mobilisation directions this council is taking to respond urgently and at the scale required to address the climate emergency. Of course, at its heart, council's plan is built on the basic understanding that we can find the solutions locally, nationally and globally by working together. Since Darabben Council's historic climate emergency declaration, we have continued calling for urgent state and federal action on climate change. So it's wonderful to see how this state government initiative is being embraced by council in the spirit of cooperation towards our shared commitment to increasing and improving recycling rates for our residents. I'm pleased to see that council officers have identified and progressed some initial investigations at three council-owned sites as potential locations for replacement of reverse vending machines for Darabben residents. And that is the Reservoir Activity Centre, the Darabben Resource Recovery Centre in Reservoir and the Darabben Arts Centre in Preston. I note that with the Container Deposit Scheme announcement imminently approaching on the 1st of November, Darabben residents will only have access to one single reverse vending machine within our municipality, and that's at a VIZI-owned site in Reservoir. I also note that at present, of the three sites identified by Darabben, only two are located in Reservoir and one located in Preston. My concern is that without an adequate number or appropriate spread of council-owned sites allocated for participation in the Container Deposit Scheme, there will be a lack of accessible options or locations for our residents to fully participate in this important program, effectively putting a handbrake on progress towards achieving council's broader climate emergency plan. As such, I move that council agree to expediate and work with the network operator to identify suitable council-owned sites for placement of reverse vending machines that will be accessible by our residents. Further, I move that council commits to ensuring that the spread of those sites is suitably broadened to include all the suburbs within our municipality, including Bandura, MacLeod, Kingsbury, Thornbury, Northgarth, Fairfield and Alphington. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Councillor Greco, as a secondaire, would you like to speak on the amendment?
Thank you, mayor, and I thank councillor Dimitriades for putting up the amendment. I think when you look at this amendment, and I won't go through the points that councillor Dimitriades outlined, but when you look at this amendment, if you look at point A, point A is very, very critical there because it's talking about discussing with VIZI the appropriate arrangements for this to be facilitated within the existing funding scope. So what I think this motion will do, and by us activating this motion, it actually is to put the onus on VIZI, who are the contractors. They have a contractual arrangement with the state government to ensure that they deliver the best outcome for our city. And we have a responsibility to our city that initiatives like this, which have proven themselves in South Australia, that we get the maximum bang for our buck. It's not exactly our money, but it's money that's going to VIZI in order to service our community. So what this amendment does, it actually helps to advocate to ensure that VIZI deliver the maximum possible opportunities for these centres to be placed in our city. So I think we've got to read it in that context, councillors, and to ensure that, because I think a motion like this will then put the onus on VIZI to actually work with council in ensuring that we get more of these return centres placed in our city. Thank you.
Can I get clarification? Because from my perspective, when you say undertake additional initial investigations, that's saying that council does all the initial investigations? And then you're saying then you want to discuss that with VIZI? Wouldn't that be VIZI's obligation that they look at what's in... I guess we could make suggestions on where the place is to go to, but wouldn't it be VIZI making the additional investigations or the initial investigation not to cancel? If I can get one of our officers to actually answer that question? Because I find that the work that council does, and then it's up to VIZI then to either accept or reject, but then they're gonna still do their own investigations and they have the contract with the places that you're discussing or talking about because there's a whole range of guidelines, and I don't even know if council has those guidelines. Can... Sorry, can you...
Sorry, ma'am, we just need to do an extension of time before Rachel answers that question.
I apologize. We'll have an extension of time. Councillor McCarthy, councillor Rennie, all those in favour to extend time? And that has been carried unanimously. Thank you. Sorry.
So what I would imagine we would do in undertaking initial investigations on the sort of timeframe that we're talking about is we would share with VIZI, I think, our views about good locations for these types of facilities and also poor locations for these types of facilities. And we would do a desktop exercise to identify if there are council properties that might fall in those sorts of locations. We would seek feedback from VIZI. We do understand they've been doing investigation work themselves, both to see if they've got views about any of the sites that we would suggest for them or whether there are sites that they've identified that they'd be seeking for us to look at. Some of those sites might be on private property and that would be a matter for VIZI to work with the property owner on. If they were to seek council to consider putting something on their land, we'd have to go through a separate decision-making process and that would happen after November.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. We've got councillor Dimitriades. Thank you, officers. Councillor Dimitriades' amendment, we've had as a mover for that and then a secondaire for councillor Greco. Do we have any other speakers? You both had your hand up at the same time. Councillor Rennie, then councillor Newton?
Thank you, mayor. I'm not sure why we'd send our staff on a goose chase that would be completely unnecessary if everybody had attended briefings and understood the basic parameters around what sites are appropriate. In order to have one of these facilities, it has to be 100 metres. I think it's 100 from 50 from a residential house. I can't think of a site in Westgarth that is 50 metres from residential properties. We've already heard that the Northgarth Aquatic and Recreation Centre doesn't meet that standard in terms of 50 metres. I don't know if anyone really wants a shipping container in All Nations Park. And I think the VIZI has already been exploring Northgarth Plaza. Similarly, Bill Oryover won't meet the 50-metre standard. Why would we send our staff on a goose chase to do what's blatantly obvious? And are we not assuming that staff are already and have already had these discussions? It's offensive to throw things into the air as though we are the experts. My colleagues, we are not the experts in this area. We have a team of staff who have been working with VIZI for months to identify more sites. It is true, we are disappointed with the number that have been confirmed so far. We want more. But sending our staff back to do work they've already done to bring us more reports is just diverting them from other more valuable activity that is going to result in more waste diversion than what we're gonna get with goose chases.
Thank you, councillor Newton.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm speaking against this amendment. We've had very clear advice from officers that if this amendment was supported, it would take two or three weeks of full-time work at an approximate cost of $9,000. What that means is that very clearly doesn't meet 6.23, which says that a council motion should not commit council to expenditure greater than $5,000 that is not included in the budget. If we support this amendment, this would go way over that, up to about a value of $9,000.
Can we kindly please speak to the issue that we're talking at hand at the moment?
Yes, so I'm speaking to the issue at hand because we're talking about five. Council will undertake additional initial investigations.
Sorry, ma'am, point of order. I'm sorry.
And your point of order?
10.1G. We've added in the word "initial investigations" to make sure the costs come down, which means that it wouldn't be as much time or money on officers' time. And we've also made it clear that it will be VIZI who does... Council will be undertaking the initial investigations with VIZI.
Three, mayor, I think Rachel's already said the cost is $9,000. Initial investigations might bring that down, but I suspect the bulk of that cost, a lot of that cost, is gonna be in the report. So, look, I think the point of order is probably in... I think councillor Newton's quite right to point out that there is in 6.2D3 a limit of $5,000 and this could well go over that. So I think she's expressing concern at the costs and I think she should be allowed to express that concern, ma'am.
I'll accept. Thank you. Can the words with VIZI be highlighted as well so people can make... can see clearly what that means?
Thank you. I accept it. And councillor Newton, go ahead.
Sure. So, hang on, do you accept that point of order? So against governance advice?
I've looked at governance advice and it actually says it's for notice of motions.
Sorry, it's correct.
It's for $5,000.
Yep.
Sorry, 6.2 is related to notice of motion, not a motion on the floor. But I think the principle is...
Yeah, that's fine. So I'm happy to continue on, if that's okay?
Yes.
Yes, so I think I would say the argument still stands. So we have a council plan that we want to deliver in the next year and this would be taking two to three weeks full-time away from a staff member. This would be taking away $9,000 of resource that could go into the things that the officers were already working on, which includes the waste review and consultation on leases. And it's worth noting as well that we do have a foreshadowed motion, if this amendment is not supported, that allows us to absolutely set the direction that we want to go, which is that council can refer via the CEO, councillor and community site suggestions to VIZI for investigation. So what that does, it allows us to, for me as a councillor, to say, I think we should have one of these container-sized things here and we can send that through to VIZI. So it's much less resource-intensive and I would suggest that you support the foreshadowed amendment.
Thank you. Are there any other councillors? If not, I'm gonna put this item to councillor Messina.
Thank you. Thanks for that, ma'am. I just, I have written a for... an amendment to my... The officer's recommendation with line five, our item, that will cover, I guess, what councillor Dimitriades is trying to achieve. I know the purpose behind it, but I have full respect upon the officers that chose Darabben to come to work at because of our waste...
Okay, thank you, councillor Messina.
Just a moment. I haven't finished.
I haven't asked you to speak on the item.
You actually called my name when I raised my hand, ma'am.
I thought it was a question because I was gonna ask if you were gonna speak in reference to or against the item. And then you started talking about that you wanted to put an amendment up.
Sorry, no, no, I... No.
Okay, sorry, apologies.
Sorry, ma'am, if I may. You asked us for any further speakers. I put my hand up, you called my name. I foreshadowed an amendment that I circulated earlier, which councillor Newton spoke on, and I wanted to speak based on what the point of councillor Dimitriades was. Because I understand why she put up this alternate motion or this amendment to the officer's recommendation. And I was speaking to, number one, elevate what she's saying and I'm hoping that my point five will align with what she's saying. So I'm sorry, ma'am, to just...
Okay. So you have emailed something around, is that correct?
I emailed it earlier. Don't worry about it. I've said what I've had to say. Let's just move on because we're running out of time.
But I still need to clarify that you've emailed something. Has that been circulated?
Yes, it has been.
And it has been added in, is that correct already? Okay, my apologies, I did not know. I just thought it was another amendment that you wanted to add to it. And that was what I was questioning. Okay, councillor Messina, you're more than welcome to speak on the item.
It's best to move on, ma'am, it's okay.
Okay, councillors, are there any more speakers in reference to this on the amendment item? I'll put that amendment item. I've noticed that councillor Lawrence has left the room. I'll put the amendment to vote. All those in favour in reference to the amendment item? I have councillor Dimitriades, I have councillor Greco and myself, councillor Williams. All those against, councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina. That item has failed. We'll go back to the original.
Mayor, can I move an amendment as circulated by councillor Messina a couple of minutes ago? The amendment would add point five. I'm confident that councillor Messina and councillor Newton will accept it. It would be that council refers via the CEO, councillor and community site suggestions to VIZI for investigation and notes that any requests from VIZI for use of council-owned sites would be reported to council for consideration at a future meeting.
Yes, very happy to accept.
Mayor, should we give the courtesy of councillor Messina moving the motion rather than...
Councillor Messina can't because she's the mover of the motion, so I'm moving it for her.
I actually foreshadowed an amendment. I had before councillor Dimitriades actually even spoke, but that was ignored and I circulated it.
Yes, councillor Messina, I'm hoping that it's okay if I move that for you because you're unable to do so as the mover of the motion. So I'm proposing your amendment.
Do you accept that, councillor Messina?
Can I not just add it into my line, item is number five? Can I not do that? It was accepted by councillor Newton and myself. So I was the mover and councillor Newton was the secondaire. She... It was circulated and it was actually circulated by governance to address that. So can that not be added to my motion?
That would be fine with me.
The tricky part was that when you did make... When you did move the item right at the start, you didn't say, "I'm moving with the amendment". That's...
Yes, I did. Yeah, that's correct. And then I circulated it and I got... Yep. Anyway, do what you like.
I'm just getting some governance advice, councillor Messina, just one moment.
Running out of time.
I know that, but we have to deal with one item at a time.
Councillor Messina, I'm just trying to help out by moving it for you to get it back in.
And councillor Rennie is correct. So councillor Rennie has to, if you like, for that item to be accepted, councillor Messina?
Can... Three, mayor, councillor Rennie, can you ask the mover and secondaire to accept that amendment?
Could the mover and secondaire please accept the amendment that councillor Messina drafted?
Yes, I'm very happy to accept the amendment.
And then it becomes part of it and councillor Messina can talk to it?
There's no need. I think we're... I've already said what I wanted to say, but I do understand the point of councillor Dimitriades and I hope this aligns with what her purpose is. It'll look at areas that we've already been advised cannot be allocated with a container deposit scheme. We're being told 50 metres is the maximum in terms of where I have...
Okay, councillor Messina, if you just accept this amendment, then it becomes accepted as a whole?
It's accepted.
Yep, okay, thank you. So...
I just have a question, a quick question in relation to the amendment. And the last words in the amendment talk about consideration at a future meeting. Can I just get some indication from our officers? What would that mean?
Three, mayor, what that means is if we have a council site that VIZI are interested in, we will bring that back at the relevant time to a council meeting. I think that's correct, Rachel? Yes, so it depends when the... If VIZI say we want to use a council site, the advice I've got is that we will bring that back to the next council meeting as soon as we're able to get a proposal from VIZI because that will require separate processes.
Councillors, as we have a motion in front of us, I'm gonna ask for it to be voted on because now that we've had our mover and secondaire has accepted the amendment. So I'm gonna put that to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Councillors, we're up to 9.4, which is award the contract, Microsoft Enterprise Agreement renewal. Councillors, do I have a mover or any questions on that first? If not, then I'll go straight into a mover and secondaire. Councillor Hannah is the mover. Do I have a secondaire? Councillor Newton?
Shall I speak to that, Mayor?
Well, the only thing you need to speak to, you actually need to put in the people's names or the contract.
Yes, they're up on the screen now.
Okay, so I think you need to stipulate the names.
Yes, so this, this motion is in a couple of parts. First is to award the contract for the renewable, renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement to software services provider Crayon Australia Private Limited, contract sum of $3,561,086 for the period of December 2023, November 2026. I don't think it's necessary, necessary for me to read the whole thing, but the next, the next one.
No, that's okay, as long as you've got the name of the, of the company.
Yeah.
And I'll say thank you. If there are no objections in reference to this item, then I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is review of election period policy 2020, 9.5. We do have an amendment from our offices under the recommendation. So I just want to confirm, councillor Messina, if you can read that and see that that's going to come up shortly. Yep, great. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Hannan?
Mayor, I have some questions for officers, sorry.
Sure. Questions?
My question is, did, did we, did officers review the instances where the election period policy was potentially breached during the 2020 council election by both council and councillors, potentially as part of this review, prior to bringing this policy to council?
Thank you to our officers, who can answer that?
Through you, Mayor. Notwithstanding that many of us were not actually here during the last election period, we believe we've now, we now have an improved understanding of the incidents where the election period policy and the electoral advertising signage and electioneering policy may not have been followed in 2020. And per our earlier responses and an earlier meeting today, I can confirm that we believe an extended review and consideration can be given, sorry, can be undertaken in the electoral advertising signage and electioneering policy. The policy is due for review in May 2024, at which point we can make necessary amendments to ensure the guidelines are strengthened.
Thank you, you have a further question?
Yes, so in the next election coming up next year, if a councillor or a candidate fails to comply with this policy, how will the policy be enforced?
Through you, Mayor, that's generally through the CEO's office, so the CEO would take action, I believe, having been through council elections before, to ask anyone who's breached the policy to redress it. So for example, a councillor was using a corporate identity, I would ask that they remove that, take it down from social media, et cetera, et cetera. So it's generally the CEO that enforces the election period policy and then also the election signage policy, which is the one about signage and call flutes and those sorts of things. So generally be done through the CEO's office. I've got a primary responsibility to make sure council elections are fair and that all candidates and councillors who are in caretaker adhere to the policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one other question. Are bikes with call flutes on them allowed under this policy to be tied to council assets such as council-owned bike racks?
Through you, Mayor, that's, I believe, Tony can help me, but I think that's through the signage policy, which is coming back in May 24.
Correct, Peter. Have a question?
Is Mayor Williams through you, I've just got a question. I understand in other elected bodies where collective resources are spent, photographs produced by ratepayers would not be permitted in elections. So I'm just, I want to ask a question on this policy. Does this go to the point of council-funded photographs will have to be taken down during an election period?
I feel like I need to take that on notice.
Thank you. Councillors, do I have a mover in reference to this? It was councillor Hannan and councillor Rennie. Councillor Hannan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quite short. I, I think this is a pretty straightforward policy. It's not really about signage or how councillors go about campaigning. That'll be another policy to come. There's three main purposes of this policy. One is to make sure we comply with the act, which is important. One is to make sure that it's, there's the highest standards of good governance in place and also just to make sure that it's fair and consistent to everyone. People may be more familiar with the state or federal levels of government where they go into what's called caretaker period. There's a similar concept here basically, where at a certain period of time before an election, because you're getting close to a change of the government effectively, there's limitations on what councillors can do, quite rightfully, things like not being able to campaign, you know, use the resources available to them as a councillor, you know, ratepayer-funded positions to campaign for themselves or their party. They're quite straightforward things. That hasn't changed from the last, from the last policy. On behalf of management as well, there's, there's basic things that apply, like not bringing forward major decisions for, for council to make, you know, multimillion dollar decisions the day before the election. The, the one, one improvement is to go from a set period of days to actually, there's a date in there, so it's very clear for everyone to see. And the date is the 24th of September 2024. That is the date that these arrangements kick in and it's fair and clear and consistent for everyone. I'm sure none of the councillors here or the management would have any problems dealing with this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, I'll ask the second if they want to speak, if we can keep it brief.
I'm happy if we could go straight to the vote.
Thank you. If we do have any objections, if not, then I'm going to put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you. We'll move over to the next agenda item. This evening, which is 9.8, to report title property matters on the sale of minor assets of Clements Reserve. Councillors, do we have any questions in reference to this? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Williams, I'm just aware of how late it is, but I just do have a question about clarity, because just from community feedback from this published agenda, I just want to ask the officers, is the intent of this discontinuous, discontinuation of the lane way to invest the property to the council, transfer the property to the council? Because that doesn't, not read there.
Thank you for your question councillor Lawrence, through you, Mayor. It, the team noted that there was a roadway through a subdivision through the top end of Clements Reserve. That title is in the name of the original subdivider. The proposal in front of you is to go to community engagement to discontinue that road and vest that in council's name.
Thanks, happy to move the motion.
Councillors, are there any further questions in reference to this item before we move on? Okay, councillor Lawrence, do you want to be the mover? Councillor Greco, you want to be a second? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, this may come as a surprise to some people, but obviously those who've been living just adjacent to here know that a lot of this area next to the Darabin Creek was actually cited to have housing blocks all the way there. And in fact, six, seven, eight years ago, we discontinued the BNEC ones, which were still lying as residential properties under there. So it won't come as a surprise that, like Central Creek also, there was council laneways in here and roadways for this subdivision that would have built this up quite heavily. This, of course, has been used for decades and decades as a park. And so this motion sets forward the advertising of this so that we can maintain the use of it, which is as a public park, and transform that roadway back into the councils vested with the council.
Councillor Greco? Nothing further? If there's any objections, no? If not, then I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you. We'll move over to the next agenda item, which is 9.9, the DCMC audit report. Councillors, do you have any questions in reference to this item?
Through you, Mayor Williams, I'd just like to, I had declared a general conflict of interest in the basis that of a board member on DCMC and we have sat and discussed this very matter. And I would, for purposes of clarity and openness and transparency, like to exit the chamber while this issue is debated.
Thank you. Councillors, do you have any questions once councillor Lawrence leaves? And then we can ask our officers. Councillors, are there any questions in reference to this item?
Sorry, we need to extend your time after this.
Okay, councillors, we've got six minutes and then we need to, or less than six minutes, we need to extend time. However, do we have a mover and a second on this item? Councillors? There's the officer's recommendation. Councillor Hannan is the mover, do I have a second? Councillor Newton, thank you.
Shall I speak briefly, Mayor?
It's up to you, or else you can say it's straightforward, or?
Well, yes, Mayor, I, I think the, the, the item presents an audit that has been done and I'd like to thank staff advice in going through that and providing some recommendations on the way forward. Happy to support that, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Newton, do you want to speak on the item?
No, nothing further.
Okay, excellent. Are there any objections in reference to this item? If not, then I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that has been carried unanimously. Can we ask for councillor Lawrence to please return to the chamber? Councillors, we have 9.10, which is the Mary Common Grant Proposal. But we'll first, we'll do the extension of time. Councillor McCarthy, and I had councillor Rennie. All those in favour to extend time? That has been carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, we go to 9.10, which is the Mary Common Grant Proposal. I believe there is a proposed amendment from councillor Hannan. And councillors, if you have any questions in reference to this item?
I have a question, Mayor.
Certainly, thank you councillor Messina.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. My understanding is that this is a state government election promise by Catheothanis, member for Northgate. Could you kindly tell me if, would the officers know if there was any state election promises from the sitting member of Preston, please, for something similar?
Is it a promise to the community or?
Election promise to the community, yes.
Okay, thank you. Over to our officers.
Through you, Mayor, can I just clarify the question councillor Messina? Do you mean in relation to this pocket park or are you just asking generally?
General, there's a, there is, this, this, this grant is basically a election promise from the state member of Northgate, for 1.5, but from the state government budget. Was there anything similar for, by the state member of Preston, please?
Through you, Mayor, not to my knowledge, but I will take it on notice just to be sure and will, if we do discover something, we'll put that in the minutes. But not to my knowledge councillor Messina.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions in reference to this item before we enter the debate, councillors?
I'm just happy to second.
Okay, no problem. I guess this being councillor Hannan's got an amendment, I guess you're the mover, and then I've got councillor Newton as a second. Councillor Hannan?
Thank you, Mayor. As referred by councillor Messina, I'd like to thank the state government for this funding opportunity, which we've been invited to apply on as council. It's a great opportunity for collaboration between local and state levels of government. And I'd like to thank the officers for developing the proposed approach and conducting initial inquiries within the limited timeframe that we had. What's proposed is a holistic approach to maximise value for the community as well as the environment. It will provide very substantial investment in, in Mary Common, as was committed to, in relation to better connectivity, landscaping, overall appeal. One item which I wanted to see specifically named is the addition of a small-scale bike track for young children, subject to community feedback. We know this has been strongly supported by the community in the past, notwithstanding some concerns about safety or when things got a bit of hand, out of hand during lockdown. But I'd still, I think there's still strong support for that as a concept. And it recognises that Mary Common does not sit on its own in isolation. It's actually part of a connected group of, of parks, both in terms of community use and connection to wildlife and nature. So it goes beyond that to also include improvements to connectivity, rewilding and play spaces at Caddie's Corner, Peter's Reserve and the Green Memorial Reserve. I think it's a really great opportunity and would encourage the councillors to support this so we can get on with, the first step is just to put in this funding submission and then go to council for feedback and this, sorry, community for feedback and this will come back to council, I understand, at a later point before deciding on the final design. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannan. Councillor Newton?
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dimitriatus?
Thank you, Mayor. I have an amendment that I circulated earlier.
Sure. If we can get our officers to kindly circulate that amendment? And I just get confirmation that councillor Messina can see that. You can't see it, can somebody kindly email it to councillor Messina? Councillor Messina, have you got that now? No? It has been emailed to you as a backup?
Thank you, Mayor, I now have it, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Is that your amendment councillor Dimitriatus?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Now I would like our mover and second if they accept your amendment?
One and two, yes, three and four, no. So overall, no.
It's a no for me.
Okay. And councillor Dimitriatus, do you have a second in reference? Because the mover and second do not accept your amendment? Councillor Lawrence, councillor Dimitriatus?
Thank you, Mayor. The Victorian Government has presented council with a great opportunity through this grant to make a substantial improvement to Mary Common. Over many years, the local community in this area have been calling for improvements that would allow for greater accessibility, safety and usability. As we all recall, this was exacerbated through the pandemic and was subject to media attention at the time, with the bike track that local children had constructed was taken down due to safety reasons. During the lockdown, over 100 local families would use this During the lockdown, over a hundred local families would use this space with many of them being young children. While the intensity of this need has now subsided, the sentiment remains with the community that the area can be activated for much more greater benefit for local residents. This is a great opportunity to reimagine what the space looks like for residents and to invest in it, to make it an area that is safe, functional and that invites people in to enjoy time together in their local neighbourhood, while also providing a space for local families, friends and kids to enjoy together. With many people across Northgate choosing to live in apartments or units without a backyard, we know how important local green open space is. This is ample funding within the generous $1.5 million funding envelope for council to undertake detailed community consultation and work with locals on a co-designed vision for this space. My amendment focuses on Mary Common and Caddy's Corner because this aligns with the community expectation to improve the areas around Mary Station and Caddy's Corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lawrence?
Um, nothing more to add. Um, um, Mayor Williams just that it's good to attract state money into the area.
Thank you. Are there any councillors who'd like to speak? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, I'm speaking against the amendment. This is an extraordinary investment which represents a big opportunity for this area. But it might be described as an over-investment if it simply goes to Mary Common Reserve. We know that many, many parks and gardens across Darabin require more investment. A lot of them will never come close to getting this type of money. And Mary Common Reserve has not been prioritised as one of council's highest priorities. If we can spread this money across several areas that are all within walking distance of each other, so we're talking about areas of green open space, um, within a stone's throw of this area, then that will enable council to spend more of its open space money in other areas of the municipality, and most notably further north in Reservoir, where we often hear from our community that there's an under-investment. So I think it's entirely sensible proposal that council would explore how to get the most community benefit to the most number of people in this Northgate-Westgarth area, which would then in turn enable us to spend more money on parks and reserves in Preston and in Reservoir. If we had been given 1.5 million to spend wherever we wanted, I think we all know that this would not have been our highest priority location. I congratulate the local community in this area for their fine advocacy, which made a difference and resulted in this election commitment. It's fantastic because it will improve the amenity of the area for those local residents. But not everyone uses the Mary Common Reserve. And in fact, by spreading the money across four areas, if we are able, a, a larger number of people will get more benefit. And as I said, we'll be able to spend money where we really want to on parks and reserves further north in Darabin that could so, really use the investment.
Thank you, councillors. Um, councillors, if there are no... Councillor McCarthy, and then I've got councillor Newton, and then I'm gonna put the item to vote.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I'm gonna have a, take a guess and suggest that I might actually hold the record for spending the most time in these parks because this is where I used to take my kids, and if anyone wants to challenge me on that, um, go for it. Um, I can tell you that, um, Peter's Reserve is desperately in need of an upgrade. It's not just in need of an upgrade to the play space, which is tired, um, which had, um, money invested in it, uh, around two decades ago from memory. Uh, but it's actually, that's the play space. When we talk about this area, that is where the play space is. So if this funding was to purely be concentrated at, at Mary Common and at Caddy's Corner, um, you actually won't see a play space upgrade at, at Peter's Reserve. Um, you actually won't see a play space introduced at Mary Common. In fact, what you'll see is some fantastic works, probably an over-investment in those spaces, but you'll actually see nothing done to Peter's Reserve. And I mention that because the community that lives adjacent to the train line, which is where Peter's Reserve is, um, is actually a community which is actually quite economically diverse. And I think that just because that park is tucked away doesn't mean that that park should be ignored. So I'm appealing to councillors to understand that there is no benefit, um, to play spaces if the proposal as put up on screen at the moment goes ahead. Because what you'll actually see is no improvement to play spaces as a result. You'll see a lot of investment in rewilding, and I'm all in favour of that, but you won't see the improvements to accessibility. And I would like to think, given in this chamber, we have talked a lot about our play spaces being accessible, accessible to all children, that that would be something we'd prioritise with this amount of money. We have the opportunity to do that tonight, councillors, um, through spreading this investment in the way that it has been proposed and actually making the play space more accessible for more children from the local community, particularly in a pocket that has actually not seen much investment in that little spot there, um, and is easily ignored. I would also say it has a powerful impact on the perception of safety along the train line corridor there. And I know that the Mary stationers would, um, really embrace that, that, uh, that element of it as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councillor Newton?
I didn't ask to speak, ma'am, thanks.
Okay, councillors, um, I'm gonna put that item to vote, whether it's to be accepted or not. So all those in favour? I've got councillor Dimitriatus, I've got councillor Greco, I've got councillor Lawrence. All those against? I've got councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, all those abstaining, councillor Messina and myself. I would take it. Thank you. So that item has not been carried forward. So we'll go back to the original councillor Maca-, sorry, councillor Hannan's amendment. I think we've had enough people speak on the item and about this. I'm gonna put this now to vote because we're running out of time. So all those in favour? I have councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco, councillor Williamson, councillor Messina. Are you voting against or are you sustaining on that?
Hang on it.
Yep, no problem, thank you. We'll move over to the next agenda item, which is the governance report for October 2023. I have a proposed amendments from councillor Newton and Hannan on 9.11. Councillors, do we have any questions in reference to this item before we enter the debate? If not, we'll go into the debate. Uh, councillor Newton?
Yes, I'm happy to move.
Oh, you have a question now?
Yeah, yeah, uh, just in terms of point for the deferment, um, uh, what will be the consequence of that and what is the general consequence of, um, also point five?
Lee and Rachel, would you like councillor Greco to ask that question again, or did you hear it?
Uh, thanks, Mayor, I think we heard the question th- through you.
Thank you.
Councillor Greco, the impact of point four would be that we would, uh, look to push back the proposed upcoming meeting, uh, with DNT members, which would be, uh, the very end of November at this stage.
Through, through you, Mayor, the impact of point five would be to move the council meeting from the Jewish Passover holiday, so that, um, to the week after.
Any further questions, councillors, before we enter the debate? Thank you to our officers. Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Williams.
And we, and I guess does that mean councillor Hannan is seconder? Do I have a seconder in reference to this item? Councillor Hannan, yep?
Can I check, do we need to extend time?
No, we've already extended once, and so we've got until 10 o'clock and we must finish at 10 o'clock.
Great, um, so with that in mind, um, I'll speak very briefly on this item. Um, so this is us being transparent about who's attended briefings, who's attended committee meetings. Uh, we've also spoke about, uh, what events we've attended through the month. Um, and for four, I, I think we just need a little bit more time on DNT. So I apologise if that means that we might need to defer the November meeting, but hopefully we can put that in December. Um, and I believe that councillor Hannan can talk about five as it was her, oh, yeah, sorry, was your idea. Um, and I think it's to do with the holiday. So, um, that's it for me.
Councillor Hannan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, uh, yes, um, and thanks to councillor Newton. Um, item five, uh, refers to, um, just changing the date from, uh, 22nd of April, which falls on Jewish Passover next year, to the, to the next week. Unfortunately, it just happens that April next year is one of those months with five Mondays, so hopefully it won't cause too much of a disruption. I appreciate the staff, um, being able to have some flexibility and, and hope other councillors will be able to make that allowance. Um, this is not just about, uh, Jewish culture, of course. Um, as far as I'm aware, there are no, other clashes with other major religions, major dates. Um, but we do always try to keep those in mind when we set the meetings for the year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there, do we have any objections in reference to this item? If not, then I will be putting it to vote.
Mayor, could I just ask that if, can we separate the points, um, so they can vote on, on the points, um, individually? Because some things I can agree with, other things I can't. And I would just ask if we could quickly do that.
So you want to separate and vote on them individually? Okay, I'm gonna vote on this individually, as councillor Greco has asked to have them individually voted on. Yeah, so I'm gonna do, not all individually, so I'm gonna do one, two, three, five and six, but we're gonna vote on four separately. So all those in favour in reference to this item? That has been carried unanimously on reference to one, two, three, five and six. And now we're voting on item number four, which is defers the appointment. Uh, all those in favour in reference to this item? I have councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, councillor Williams, all those against. I have councillor Messina, uh, who would like to abstain, councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Lawrence and councillor Greco. Thank you, councillors. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is declaration of the special charge Solosaver round three to 4.2 and agenda item 9.12. Councillors, do you have any questions in reference to this item? If not, then I will ask our councillors if we have a mover and a seconder on this. We have a mover, councillor Greco, and I saw councillor Rennie Han as a seconder. Councillor Greco?
I, I think the report's quite self-explanatory. We've had a lot of these, uh, types of reports over the years. So I'll just leave it at that and assume that it's been read thoroughly by councillors and that we can take it to a vote.
Uh, councillor, as a seconder, would you like to speak? If not, or?
Always great to see more of these come before council.
Okay, excellent. I believe there's no objection, then I'm gonna put that to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you, councillors. We'll move over to the next item, which is, uh, 9.13 for the CEO Employment Matters Committee Independent Chair.
Through you, Mayor, I'll declare a general conflict of interest on this item and on the next item, and I'll depart the chamber.
Thank you. We'll wait for you to leave the chamber. Thank you, Peter. Councillors, do we have any questions to our officers in regarding this item? If not, do we, you have a question?
I'm happy to move.
Okay, councillor Newton, happy to move. And councillor McCarthy, second. Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. I was part of the process of the CEO Employment Matters Committee recommending Joe up to a full council decision. Um, so we're very pleased to have Joe hopefully being appointed for a two-year contract to work with us in the independent chair, um, position. We've worked with Joe for, um, probably over a year now, um, and I really do commend him to council and council laws. Um, we have in Joe a very experienced former CEO. Uh, we have someone who has worked in human resources in all many different areas. And, um, I think that we are very fortunate to have him in the position. Um, and while we're here, I also just want to really commend, um, the other applicants. Uh, we did have strong applications from other, um, applicants as well as Joe, um, but Joe was a real standout. So congratulations, and we look forward to working with you for the next two years, Joe.
Thank you. Councillor McCarthy? Nothing further to add? Then I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you, councillors. Next agenda item that we have is item number 10, items to be tabled. I believe that there are no items to be tabled this evening. And move on to notice of motions, as there's a notice of motion amendment from councillor Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I've got an alternate motion, uh, just with one extra line that's been circulated.
Councillors, councillor Messina, are you able to read that, or? Yep.
I saw it, I saw it earlier, thank you.
Excellent. Councillors? As, this is councillor Newton, do I have a seconder? Oh, everybody's hand, I saw councillor McCarthy had his hand up. Councillor Newton? Yep, and then I got councillor McCarthy.
Great, um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I know we haven't touched on The Voice tonight, um, but I think that for Darabin, um, personally, I was very pleased by the wide support for The Voice, uh, within Darabin. That's my personal opinion. Um, but now we have to move forward to what's next. Um, and this is something that I know that there's at least two other councils that are doing this already. Um, so I know that Hobson's Bay has implemented this, um, very quickly. And our neighbours in Mary Beck are also, um, a little bit further ahead with us. I think they're receiving a report this month about, um, this same topic. Um, so for me, I think this is a really, really easy way that we can highlight uh, that we are on Wondry country. Um, so that will be through, if we go forward with it, through rates notices, social media, email signatures, um, and I think it just elevates and recognises that we are on Wondry land, um, and that the traditional owners of the land are the Wondry people of the Kulin nations. Uh, we have spoken to the Darabin Aboriginal Advisory Committee about this motion and this idea. Uh, they're very supportive, um, but I do, uh, thank councillor Dimitriatus for suggesting that we include specifically in the motion consultation with the Wondry Warang Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation, because we don't have a Wondry representative on the Darabin Aboriginal Advisory Committee, so it's very much worth consulting with them. Um, but I look forward to, um, what comes back with this report. Um, I think it's such a simple change, um, but I think it's an important one, so, um, I hope it can be unanimously supported. Thank you.
Councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak on the item?
Only just to say thank you to councillor Newton for taking the initiative in relation to this, and also, um, for taking the time to engage with the Darabin Aboriginal Advisory Committee um, as a critical, um, step before bringing this to council. Um, and only also just to add that if I'm correct in understanding the implications of, um, this proceeding is that obviously mail, that mail and correspondents from Darabin would reference, um, obviously Wondry Warang country as the, um, as the traditional ownership. But also, if mail is going out, um, I would hope that, uh, that would also recognise the country to where it's heading. And, um, so that requires us to, uh, do a bit of work in both directions, um, because anything we can do to reinforce that message to those who we communicate with, um, about whose country they're on, I think is a, a small but important part of the process that we hope will continue in terms of, um, recognition and other things, hopefully in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillors, I'm gonna put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, as there are no urgent business this evening, and, um, we'll move over to item number 13. We have one consideration of reports to be considered confidential. So I will...